Closed session items. So at this point, if there are any public comment for the closed session items, we have three this evening and potentially looking to add a third.
Before, maybe before we get to public comment, let's, we have a couple of items that we'd like to have added to the agenda. Pursuant to government code section five, four, and nine, fifty-four point two, you know, we had news every once in a while. There are two items that are on the dais that are identified as business items eight and nine. Both are storm related and require immediate action and arose after the agenda was posted. And then we also have a closed session item that is a real property negotiation item. That would be under the same real property exception that we have used for a couple of meetings. And I will have it by the time we come back out at seven o'clock to read it into the record. But that also arose after the agenda was posted on Friday and is time sensitive and needs to be added. So we just have a, if it's the council's desire, a single motion to add all three items to the agenda.
So move. We've got a motion on the floor.
We have a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Motion to pass.
Let the record reflect, we have a silent roll call and four members of the council were here. Mayor Polaski says not yet.
Great. All right. So at this point in time, we'll go ahead and move into closed session.
Public comment on any of them.
Oh, excuse me. I thought we did that.
We did, but we had another, yeah.
At this point in time, if there's any public comment regarding, regarding any of the closed session items and only the closed sessions items at this time, I'll take it first to those in the chambers. Those out there in virtual land. None. So seeing that there are none, we'll go ahead and unless the council has questions, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
Thank you for joining us. We are reconvening from our closed session item. And we are having the report out now. So thank you for those that are joining us. I know we started at five and we had several closed session items. So that's why we're starting the meeting at seven, just in case. I know some people are used to our six thirty start time. So I will send, turn this over to our city attorney and our city manager to do a report out on our closed session.
Um, true. Uh, Madam Mayor and Council, with respect to item one, the city manager, the city council met with its recruiter for the city manager's position and provided some direction. No other reportable action was taken. On item number two, the council briefly met with the interim city manager. There was what I'm not sure I would characterize it as evaluation, but there was an exchange of ideas and communications and so forth, and no other reportable action was taken. With respect to item three, that item, we did not get to that. If we end the meeting in time this evening, we will go back to that. Otherwise, we're going to continue that item to the agenda for the next council meeting. And we added a fourth item, which was pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight, real property negotiations. For one eighty-three Soladat Street, the city council met with its property negotiator and provided direction and no other reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you so much. So we'll move on now to our pledge of allegiance. So if you're joining us here at the chambers, if you can please raise. And at this time, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at five o'clock, the council did vote to add two items to the agenda. Their items be eight and B nine. The eight will be authorization to receive wastewater from the chular plant. And the nine is the ratification of the council of this city manager's declaration of emergency.
Thank you. So we'll have those items added to our agenda. And we'll move on now to our next item, which is public comments. So at this time, any member of the public that wishes to address the council may, may do so on any items that are appearing on the agenda and that are of interest to the jurisdiction of the city council. So just as a reminder, if you're gonna be, if you're in the chambers, if you can come up to the podium, please, and state your name. We do have three minutes, so we're gonna keep time to that. If you are joining us via Facebook, thank you for joining us. However, public comments, for public comments, please join the, the virtual, the Zoom, the Zoom session for your, for your comments. And then I'm gonna do the public comments first for those that are here in our chambers, and then I'll take it out to those that are joining us virtually. And if you can please raise your hand to be recognized, so we can unmute you. So any public comments for those that are here in our in our chambers.
Good evening, councils. Madam Mayor Velasquez, my name is Monica Andrade. We're in a unique position to shape how our city officials are elected. Through district voting, not only are we making it more accessible for unqualified residents to run for office, but we're also moving into a system where all sectors of the cities are being heard. As is today in Solidan, elections, elections are run primarily on popularity contest with very little civic engagement, where very little civic engagement takes place. So what do we have to lose? My question is, why doesn't this council want more members to be included in an advisory committee? Is it because you want to ensure you can control as much of the outcome as possible? Mr. Jimenez, you repeatedly say that you want this process.
So Ms. Andrade, so we do have, if you want to make a, a public comment on that specific item, we do have it on the agenda.
I can do this, can I just continue right now?
Okay, no, so we have.
Well, she's already.
Mr. Jimenez, you repeatedly say that you want this process to come from residents, yet when given the option to include more people in this committee, you were first, you were the first to motion to limit it to only five members appointed by this council. Mr. Chavez, you can be heard in the past meetings making the ridiculous, insulting comparison of districting to what is going on in Ukraine. Yet your actions on this matter resemble more of that of the fascist Russian oligarchs. When I, as a constituent, requested a meeting with you regarding this matter last year, you claimed that my email that was sent to your official city account had must have gone to spam. You sit here and claim to be offended that Lulaq is coming and meddling into the city's affairs. Yet if I recall correctly, and I do, you and Mr. Jimenez both agreed with a meeting, to a meeting with Lulaq, and ignored me as a constituent. It was Lulaq, not this council, who extended the invitation from my voice to be heard on this matter. I have watched this council sit on this issue and literally vote to take no action in the past. And now, because of this interaction of this council, we are in this situation. So I, for good reasons, have very little faith in this council's intentions to limit the amount of members to the advisory committee that will be formed later on. And for that reason, I do hope that Lulaq District Club enforces their condition to include one of its members aside from the five proposed appointees. Lastly, whether the majority of this body likes it or not, at the end of the day, this change is coming. And it is more important to get it right and move the city forward by not limiting public engagement in all processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments at this time from those that are joining us here in our chambers? Okay, see none, then I will take it out to those that are joining us virtually. And so Stephen, I can't see if you can give me access. So if there's anyone that.
I've got one, Isabel Mesa.
Okay, Isabel, do you wanna unmute yourself?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Isabel Mesa. I am forty-one, one forty-one Iris Place, and I'm here as a member as committee, a member, measure as committee member. I respectfully asking the council to shrink the number of the, of the measure as committee or to implement an attendance rule. The reason being is because we have not been able to establish a quorum in the past three meetings. Please keep in mind that the measure as committee meets regularly on a quarterly basis. I myself was appointed to the measure as committee close to a year ago. And since then, we have not had a quorum. If we do not have a quorum, we cannot conduct any business. And if we cannot conduct any business, we cannot bring any recommendations to the city council. I completely understand that last minute circumstances do arise, but the attendance issue really needs to be addressed. And last, lastly, I would like to thank Darlene, Jessica Pott, Susana Suella, and Mike Howard for their brief presentation last week. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else that's joining us via Zoom? Stephen, I don't see anyone else.
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on then to our next item on our agenda. And we are on youth council reports, and we have a written and a verbal report that's gonna be provided to council. And then we do have two of the members of our youth group.
I'm actually, sorry, this is a Soladat Youth Council March report. For the month of March, the Soladat Youth Council is focused on continued development and implementation of the access to these issues initiative. We look forward to initiating meaningful changes to gain awareness of the current offerings and needs on the coming weeks to provide opportunities for better collaboration and partnership with various agencies and on public partners. For, for our highlights, following the release of this year's initiative, the youth council finalized the focus and initiative strategy as well as developed a framework to describe our initiative. Some of the specific actions we engaged in the coming weeks include inviting SHS alumni to learn about their experiences around accessing recreational art and college readiness programming in Soladat, inviting SCU and City of Soladat recreational staff to present to the faculty about the yearly programming, coordinating a site visit to MTS, the Martin Luther King Junior School of the Arts, to learn about their programming. After these engagements, the youth program, program survey, though include opportunities for greater audience of youth to share ideas and experiences related to access to these spaces. Um, we also have the Soladat USC LCAP. So on March second, members of the Soladat Youth Council attended the Soladat High School LCAP Educational Partner Engagement Meeting. And the purpose of this meeting was to gather input from community members, including our students, on the district's priorities to ensure student success for all. And we look forward to promoting, promoting that in the student survey, which will be released soon. As for some upcoming evidence and events, we have a meeting on March twentieth and April third. Um, during those meetings, we will develop the S Y C Initiative Survey and again find meetings with other key partners. And as for our commissioner reflection, we are both proud that the steady progress made through the month of March has been successful as we continue developing the outline for the survey and the outcomes they'll produce as we begin finding the structure for a committee forum. Um, that's all we have to report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report, and thank you for all the engagement that you've all been doing. Council, is there any questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is council presentations. And today we have three council presentations, and we'll begin with the proclamation that will be presented to the Salinas Valley State Prison Assistant Warden Hovita Barshaky. And we also have Captain Constantine. Do we still, if you guys want to come to the podium, Captain Constantino, Lomily, and Davis. They're joining us here as well. And this is in recognition of Women's History Month, so we do have a proclamation. I won't be reading, I won't be reading all of the information, but I do wanna just read a couple of the some of the sentences here in terms of the recognition that we have tonight. And so I'm really excited to be able to have some amazing women that are here. And this is a proclamation of the City of Solidan honoring March twenty twenty-third as National Women's History Month. National Women's History Month recognizes and spreads awareness of the importance of women in the history of the United States. Throughout the history of the United States, whether in home, the workplace, schools, the courts, or in wartime, women have fought for themselves, their families, and all the people of the United States, even from the early days of the history of the United States. Abigail Adams urged her husband to remember the ladies when representatives met for the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-six. And so women were particularly important in the establishment of the early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions of the United States. Women led the efforts to secure suffrage and equal opportunity for women, and also served in the abolitionist movement, in the emancipation movement, labor movement, civil rights. labor movement, civil rights movement, and other causes to create a more fair and just society for all. Suffragists wrote, "March were arrested and ultimately succeeded in achieving" the enactment of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, Section 1 of which provides, "The right of the citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." And the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which extended the protection of the right to vote to women of color and language minorities. So in 2019, we celebrated the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. So today, I just want to say we're honored, on behalf of the council, to be able to ensure that we continue to celebrate and support women that are making history in our community. Especially, I mean, for me, it was really important to be able to recognize the women in Salinas Valley State Prison, especially because that field is really predominantly, it's predominantly male, so being able to be there as captains, as sergeants, you know, as assistant wardens, I think it really shows our community, especially a lot of the female in our community, that anything's possible and that women's contributions and women's voices and women's presence is valued in any industry. So with that, I want to say thank you so much. We are so proud to be able to present this proclamation, and I will turn it over to Hovita, so if you guys want to say a few words, we'd love to have the opportunity for you all to share a few words with us.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor Anna Velazquez, for inviting me here today, inviting us here today. I am honored to accept, along with my colleagues, the City of Saladin's Women's History Month proclamation on behalf of all the women working in CDCR, acknowledging the challenges and successes as we continue breaking barriers. I've been working at Salinas Valley State Prison since 2004. But before I share my work experience with you, I'd like to share a little history of CDCR, women in CDCR. With challenges of working in a male-dominated environment, early female officers said they faced a hostile work environment from the incarcerated population, as well as from other staff. There was a lot of pressure on those first female staff, with many saying they needed to work twice as hard to prove themselves. In 1955, Mrs. Dolly Taylor was the first female officer to work dead row. In 1980, Mrs. Ruth Russian was the first female to serve as director in CDCR. In October 2020, Mrs. Kathleen Allison was the first female secretary of CDCR. Currently, women are represented in all classifications within CDCR. I'm proud to see how far we have come. And now, I will share a little of my CDCR work history with you. I was hired as an office assistant, later promoting to the following classifications: Business Services Assistant, Contracts and Budget Analyst, Procurement and Services Officer, Correctional Business Manager. I recently accepted a promotion to associate warden and awaiting the peace officer appointment from headquarters. I am also required to serve as administrative officer of the day three to four weeks out of the year. As AOD, we are responsible for the institution after business hours on weekends and on behalf of our warden dealing with high-skill incidents. Oftentimes, I have encountered subtle resistance when giving direction to staff. This required extra effort on my part. I invested time in getting to know my staff, so they can view me as a leader, respecting me for my qualities, capabilities, and qualities, rather than my position. No matter the challenges I've encountered along the way, I was disciplined and determined to survive in any work environment. No matter what, I remain true to myself. As I look back at my career thus far, I see lessons that brought me to my current strength and wisdom. Therefore, I say to all women, be confident and courageous. Be so skilled that your talent cannot be overlooked. Regardless of the limitations society puts on us, we mean business. We are strong women with standards and boundaries. Continue to push yourself daily to maximize your potential. It would be an ethical crime to let your potential go to waste. I thank every woman before us that paved the way. Mayor Anna Velazquez, we are very proud of you on behalf of Salinas Valley State Prison of all the achievements in making history by becoming the first woman mayor in Saladin. I am overwhelmed with gratitude to have come across leaders that understand the need to put value into a person and validate the woman's work. Leaders who truly care, leaders who create leaders, not just another worker. Leaders that don't demand performance, but they inspire it. With this, I describe the incredible women mentors I have and my leader, Warden Trent Allen, who is here with us today. If we can achieve gender parity in the highest level of government, I'm optimistic that we can do the same everywhere else. To conclude, I would like to leave you with this. We are all born from a woman, and in treating others with dignity and respect is proof that we have all been raised by a queen. Whichever gender we are, always remember, the sun shines for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those words, and thank you so much, Warden Allen, for joining us today as well. And I know the other captains, I'm really just amazed too of the work that you've all been doing and just the support systems that you found in CDCR. You know, given the institution and some of the male-dominated kind of still, it's changing, so we're glad to see that. So thank you. I don't know if there was any of the other captains that wanted to say a few words? No?
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, council members, everyone here. My name is Naomi Davis, and I work as a captain at Salinas Valley State Prison. Before I get started, I want to first congratulate my mayor, I mean, my warden publicly. Warden's confirmation recently, so he is no longer acting. He is now confirmed our warden, so I want to congratulate him publicly. So, Hovita, you did a very great job with that speech. And just to piggyback off of what she said about women and corrections and a lot of the challenges that we face, more so for me and a lot of the people that I've spoken with. People always ask me, what is it like to be a woman working in this field? And me, I just tell them that, you know, anybody can do the job. It doesn't matter who you are, man, woman, you just have to know you can do it and just walk in with a command presence and not let anybody tell you that you can't do it. I tell people, and what was told to me, always believe in yourself, no matter what challenge you face. I was a single mother, or I am a single mother, but when I started, my children were little, working shift work, and I promoted through the ranks. And I've always tried to encourage people that, no matter what you face, there's always somebody there, there's always a support system that you can reach out to and to not be ashamed to reach out for help. That used to be me. My pride used to get in the way when I needed some help with my children or whatever. But no more of that. We all need to lean on each other. And I try to encourage people daily and make myself available as well, not just as a manager, but just as a friend, a woman, a person, another mother, because you just never know what someone's going through. So I encourage people also to treat everybody with kindness, because someone could be fighting a battle internally, and what you say or how you treat them or how you even look at them could, you know, can trigger something. So you never want to be mean, you never want to undermine anybody. So always be nice, always be kind. So our jobs as managers are just to encourage one another, to lift other people up, to try to, you know, make sure everybody is okay. And I just feel like I'm motherly. I'm always that motherly type of person. But it's okay, and I tell my staff as well, and even my coworkers, some of them may be older than me, but I feel like I'm the mom. I think Hovita just said that earlier. She said, "You're so motherly." But I just feel like I just have to protect everybody and just put my arms around everybody, because we all need that, and it's okay to do that. And I'm always going to be that one to make sure that the people around me are okay. And it's not just for my staff, but we also have to protect the inmates that are inside as well. Our job is to make sure that they are okay, that they're safe and that they're secure in their cells, they're not, you know, they're not being harassed by other inmates. Whatever the case may be, we have a big job to fill, and it's not just us. So and I let people know, we're not just here for our staff, but we're here for the inmates as well. So I just want to just put the shout out to everybody that works in corrections, all my coworkers here. Again, I thank my warden for hiring me to do this job, because he saw something in me that I probably didn't see. And he has entrusted this job to me. He has entrusted this job to us. And we are going to make sure we do the best that we can to make not only the institution proud, but the whole state of California.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Captain Davis. So if we can just pause for a few minutes, can we just pause for a few minutes? If we can take a photo with the council?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First off, I wanted to congratulate and thank all of you for being here tonight. And people don't understand, especially those coming from the institution. I worked at Salinas Valley, helped open up Salinas Valley, worked on ER, Little Beirut, when I was back in the day. You know, people from the institution understand and know what that means. For a woman to go in there, for a man to go in there, it's rather intimidating when you hear the doors close. And for a female to go in there and experience that, in addition to have to gain the respect of their peers, is extremely challenging and deal with problematic individuals that are incarcerated because they can't adhere to society's rules. So it goes beyond my thoughts as far as the ability for you to adjust, to be able to be a leader in that area. As a parole administrator and from Central Coast, I had many supervisors that I brought in that were females. And they were probably one of the best supervisors that I had in my whole Central Coast from Geroa all the way to Ventura parole offices. And so therefore, we value the expertise that you have. We value your motivation and your leadership, and we know we're a better community as a result of your participation and your experience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, Hovita and Naomi, for being here and speaking to your whole group, honestly, sitting up here and just watching you ladies come up to the front. I felt your power. I love everyone else sitting up here with me. I felt it, but just wanted to thank you for being role models and for, you know, leading the way at the CDCR. I'm sure that's not easy. I actually have an auto repair shop, and sometimes when people come, they ask me, "Oh, can I talk to a mechanic?" And I'm like, "While you're talking to the owner." So I feel you when it comes to that. You guys are, you know, are great role models, and I just thank you for that. Keep up the great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I have a degree in criminology, but corrections isn't where I wanted to go.
I don't have a degree in criminology. But what I will say is that I think that what you just shared with us as far as that presence that you have here in this chamber, in this, here in the dais, as far as the warmth that you showed, the motherly instincts that you showed, the leadership that you showed, I think that that was evident here in these chambers. So I'm sure, just like it's evident here and the way we felt it right now, it's felt over at the workplace. And so not only for, as you said, for the employees and your colleagues, but also for those who are incarcerated. So thank you for all the hard work that you do and those challenges that you have been able to surpass on a personal level and been able to move along and show that leadership. And we understand those challenges here in small communities, and we ask that your leadership also be part of this community here that is next to that prison. So thank you all, all of you.
I want to thank you for everything that you do and for being here. One, my sister, my sister also works at the prison. She's a sergeant as well. When she went to the academy, she called me. I was living in San Jose. And she said, "Could you help me?" And I was the one helping with the kids when they were growing up, so that she could go to the academy. And I have seen all the work that she does. Sometimes she does, a whole week she does doubles. So I know what you guys go through. I know what she has done. And it's my respect. You guys are great. Thank you so much for all you do. And not only for that, you have a family, so it's two jobs at the same time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So just again, just a big round of applause. Thank you for uplifting me. Just for a few minutes, and if we can take a photo, if you don't mind. And so we are back now. We have our second item under council presentations. And I do want to just make sure I say, I know there's a lot of items on the agenda for today. And we are, I know we have a hard stop at 10:30, so some of those items that we cannot get to, we'll make sure that they come before us on the next meeting. But we may want to arrange, rearrange some of the items under B, because I know some of you that are here for some of those appointments, you might want to take those at the beginning. So we'll look at that. So our next item on the agenda is Central Coast Community Energy Senior Customer Accounts Manager, Judy Young, will provide us with a brief presentation and update on the three CE efforts. So is Judy joining us for a second? Okay, Judy, if you'd like to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me, if I can share. Let's see. I will be brief, and you can see my screen, yes?
Or provided to the background. We hire a consultant, a traffic engineering services company that be the analysis. Wine companies provide some comments, some concerns. And the analysis cover all that. But but this wine companies were asking for and those concerns. So. The next slide is the one that is gonna tell us, the one that is with your red is the all existing traffic. The track road. And the one with green on the right is the new implemented new track route. On the wine concerns, we have a, we identified three major ones. One was the tight turning at intersections. The analysis through the West Street and Gavilan Drive has some tight turning radius for the trucks that we have. And Orchard Lane and Metz Road is the other intersection that has those major concerns. On this one, traffic around schools on Metz Road. The analysis of all the, the wine concern on this one, they were saying that. You know, it was like a little bit more dangerous to go through all their, following all the route. When in reality, the new route is redirecting the tracks away from three on control crossings across Metz Road and for the two elementary schools. The way that this control is like, we know Orchard Lane is a, is a collector as well as West Street. And these are by definition is wider street with no residential direct driveway access. So that is. And the third one, a major concern, they propose a route to the wineries. They were saying that, you know, assume we have a East Street is right on Monterey. Like. It's gonna see over here. East Street, right on Monterey, all the way to Third Street. Then taking Third Street all the way until, until Metz. The trucks will, when they follow this route and then it reverses to get back to out of town. So. This new route that they were proposing. Jukes and narrow streets is not recommended because of that reason. It direct residential driveway access. It has more potential and bicycle traffic. And also includes a low hanging utility wires like his home cable power, et cetera. Another issue that make this route not desirable for truck is a major deep that is right there by Bosby Park and Monterey and Park Street. That this dip is very difficult for trucks to traverse and with unstable loads, you know, there will be likely spills. I include some pictures from the analysis report where we have a low overhanging utility wires on Third Street as well as on Palm Avenue. More utilities wire on Monterey Street, the large dip on Monterey Street, the one that we was just mentioning on this area. The picture doesn't look like a very good, but. Is. We all know it pretty well.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, we know about that.
And regarding the, the tight turning movements from the traffic, like we can see right here in Monterey Street and Third Street is like the one the truck is coming this way. And when it turns, it's, as you can see, it made the other, the other lane that is, you know, on eastbound. When we got a Monterey and East Street is the same situation. Okay, on Metz Road and Orchard Lane, if we followed that route as they were proposing, we were encroaching on again onto the, the other lane that is coming westbound along Metz Road. The second part of the track route, traffic analysis is include alternatives for the solution on this West Street and Gavilan Drive. The alternative is gonna be on the next graphic where you can see, one of the alternatives was making, you know, provide a stop bar like further 50 feet from the existing. Stop bar in order to avoid, you know, any type of collision. That's one of the alternatives that they recommended. Or they're, they're analyzed. Alternative two is the most feasible one since we are, this eliminating the left turn lane on this one. The, the left turn pocket and convert it to a true lane to a shared left through lane. This one, if it can allow the existing westbound left turn lane to be a stripe median so trucks can use this space to complete the northbound right turn without vehicle, complete, any vehicle conflict. Orchard Lane and Metz Road is, is this a more simple solution? Includes. Also, where you can see that the yellow area is to eliminate that left turn pocket in order to. Provide a, a safe turning movement for the trucks. And. The, these are the recommendations like I already mentioned, alternative number two, we provide a space for the northbound right, right car turns with a westbound left turn stripe as median and we can go back to the. If for that necessary to the, to the graphic and to the exit. Orchard Lane. And Metz Road, the alternative interior three provides sufficient space, sufficient space for all truck turns and reduces the overall intersection. At this time.
Yes.
Okay, the last, the last slide is just to believe the point, we just providing warning at this time until the bridge repairs are completed. And then we can move to any questions.
Thank, thank you, Oscar. So I just wanna start off by saying, thank you for bringing this back. I think the last time we had this discussion was back in August and we had, there was concerns about changing the truck route from our existing through East and, and Metz. To what was proposed through West and Orchard, right? Through Gabaland, sorry, to Gabaland and then through Orchard. So I, I know that there's been other concerns obviously since then. So I think for the recommendations part, I, I wanna make sure that that comes back to an open public meeting where residents can have an opportunity to be able to comment because my understanding from that was that we're gonna come back and just get an update on the complaints, where were we at with that, was that working, was it not? Because we had some concerns back then in terms of just making, just making, rerouting that because of all of the traffic impacts already within Gabaland and then Orchard, since it had opened up. My concerns remain the same that now Orchard where, you know, there's gonna be a part that's gonna be there, there's gonna obviously be more pedestrian traffic, there's gonna be more traffic in that area and continuing with that same route. I think I just wanted to make sure that there was an assessment of any concerns that have came in, how the truck route is working, was there any, any other issues that we needed as a council to address or was it working? So just to afford that opportunity, so we'll come back because we, I don't think, we're not, it's not agendized, Mike, as an action item, so I wanna afford that to come back for discussion.
Perfect.
But I, I, I will open it up for the council and then I will take it out to, to the public since I know there was some, some comments in regards to just existing route right now. So council, let me start with council member Gabriela, if there's any questions on the presentation.
Also speaking the, the Gabaland, so there's Gabaland High School, Jasper and Shiony, and then San Francisco, so it's like four different schools. Are we gonna have some sort of a schedule if they go through that?
Imagine that. So usually in terms of time?
Yes, because seven thirty to eight thirty is a lot of traffic with the school, with cars, people in all the points in high school and all the schools. So it should be, it would be really bad if we have like three, four trucks going that way and then I have to get late to my work because of the traffic. I mean, I'm just saying me, but in reality, if you, if you start walking, if you start driving in that area at eight, um, seven, seven thirty-five or seven forty, there's so much traffic that it will take, it takes me almost twenty minutes to go from, from Main Street, Main Street and Gabaland all the way to Main Street School. So it's really bad. So if we have trucks going that way, it's gonna be really.
Well, let, let's talk from here about the same situation it was with Metz Road when they were closing, you know, those two is elementary schools and the school district as well.
So that is the current truck route right now? No, no.
But what about the roundabout is?
That's not the truck.
That's why this came back after six months to assess it.
So the newest on Gabaland.
Orchard Lane, Gabaland, and then West.
Yeah, so that's what the concern was to bring it back after six months to have a discussion because there was concerns about that back in August when that truck route was changed. So I'll turn it over to council member Chavez.
You know, I think that what the mayor asked, I think, you know, those are the things that we were kind of hoping to get some information. I know you, you went to the wineries, which that's great because they're the ones that are the, you know, the truckers, the, the drivers. But it would've been good to have gotten some input, I think, from the community as well, so maybe we can get a little bit of that at the next time. The only question I had on that recommendation, and I know we're not moving forward with any recommendations, was, I just, I was just trying to clarify for myself what the recommendation was to get rid of the left turn lane on Gabiland onto West?
Yes. So the next lane.
I, I get it, I, I get it for the truck.
Yeah, so that way we will provide enough space to.
Okay. And I, I jump anything into that hasn't already been set, so we'll just wait till the next time it comes around again. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good with you. That's fine, so it comes back to us.
So thank you for, for starting the process.
Yeah, thank you. And I will open it up for comments from the public on this, so if there's any comments from any members of the public on the presentation that was provided to us. So we do have, if you could come up to the podium. And so we, we will, if you can just share your name, your address, and then we'll start the timer once you start speaking, so we do have three minutes.
I guess, good evening. My name's Armando Piro, I live in Solano, through saying that Franchioli Street. Just about a block away from my house, my wife was coming back from church on a Saturday evening on the corner of Gabiland and West Street. She was waiting for her light to go green, there was a truck, commercial trucker turning. During that turn, if my wife was the chosen, what I call it, or she got hit from the front of the vehicles all the way to the back. The, the vehicle was a total loss according to our insurance. We, you know, materialist stuff or materialistic stuff, but I was very fortunate after assessing the, the incident and even the truck. The two thousand pound weight object that hit my wife could have caused some physical serious damage. I never realized about the, the commercial truck route, I, you know, I didn't even know about the new route until one of my family members brought it up and I started looking into it. Reached out to mayor, to the mayor and, you know, find out more information about it. And to me, look, commercial trucks are always a hazard, that's fact. It's always gonna be there. Now the hazards there and how can you reduce that risk of that hazard? And you got, you guys got some challenges looking at that presentation. The city's growing, the infrastructure's not there on the city, on the, on the, on the roads, turning radius, you got some major challenges on, on trying to improve this. My biggest concern is regardless of what route you take on, on recommendations, there's always gonna be that, that risk level, it's just a matter of assessing I, of the, of what route, my, the current truck route right now that it's implemented by the city, I think it's not the best one. One of my questions to you guys, the council is, I'm trying to understand, help me understand how we want forty-sixth one, the commercial truck route, how can you prohibit from the state highway, from commercial trucks utilizing that and rerouting them to a different route, which is technically the city highways, which are not, and the infrastructure is not there to, for the train reuse. And I ask that because I was one of potential victim of being clipped by one big commercial truck where I was on my right lane, the trucker was on his left, he never signaled. This is a few months prior to my wife's accident. I almost got clipped, unfortunately, there was no vehicles behind me, I hit my truck on reverse and did not get in a serious accident because let's face it, that truck would never even felt my, me being hit, he would probably just continue on with his, with his day. One of the challenges I've heard on this presentation is you, the, you, it's great you, engineer, you talk to the wineries, but the wineries are not. You got agricultural vegetables that are having even started in peak season yet, we're just coming back from the Yuma growing region, coming back to the Salinas Valley, it's gonna impact.
Thank you, Armando, I'm gonna have to stop you because I really wanna make sure that we stay to the three minutes, but your, your point well taken. And so I think we have the documents and you did, I did share the email that you sent to me as well, so I know we have that as well for documentation. Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments? Any public comments from those that are joining us virtually?
One Fernando.
Okay. Fernando, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Fernando, we can hear you. Okay. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, so we are closed, so, so thank you for the comments that were made, we'll come back, this item will come back to the council and then we'll have, we'll make sure that we have enough outreach to ensure that we have feedback from our residents in regards to the current route and then what's gonna be proposed.
Yes, yes, to add something, I will, you know, contact West Street with Jesus or Public Coverage Management and provide this information, put it on, on maybe a meeting with the community or on the media. So I, I'm gonna move forward in that direction.
Okay, so we'll come back at a public, so we'll come back to the council, right?
I, I, that, when you had asked me a question earlier, I was on my phone, I wasn't taking care of, I wasn't ordering shoes during. I looked at the ordinance we adopted for truck routes and it does require an ordinance to be adopted and changed truck route, so we'd had to bring it back and go through that formal process.
Okay, because we haven't adopted the ordinance yet, so.
We already, no, we haven't adopted a truck route, but we adopted a, a route at that time, if we wanna change it, then we had to go through the ordinance process.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Oscar, for that presentation and thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Okay, council, at this time then we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. And now we have our consent calendar and for tonight we have counts. Consent calendar C dash one through C dash ten. At this time, any members of the public, when we go to the public first, any members of the public wish to pull the item, any consent calendar for, for additional discussion or?
Number five.
Okay, hold on, hold on, council member, let me just make sure, any member of the public first? Okay, so no member of the public wants to pull any items and now I will entertain, now I'll bring it to the council if the council wants to pull an item, so C dash five, council member Gabriela. Okay, and I would like to pull C six for question and C ten. Any other comments? I mean, comments, council doesn't wanna pull any other items, okay? If not, then I will entertain a motion then to approve the other items with the exception of C dash five, six, and ten. Can I get a motion for approval? Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, a second, okay? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we'll go ahead, council member Gabriela, item C dash five.
Yeah, this one, throughout the, the documents, I kept reading the, the word consultant. So I'm. Concerned this particular, we are. Oh my god. I think I lost that. So for this item, we are hiring somebody, a consultant to do quarterly reports and, and just reports in general. Just. Yeah, my question is basically, so we're hiring people to, to do a report for us in the, in all the items or? I think I pulled out that wrong one, let me see.
So you had a question in regards to the reports?
Yeah, I think it was number seven.
So this is the one with the consultant, so MS.
Yeah, the consultant, I, I think I lost the, the one that I was, let me, let me go back, can you come back to me?
Yeah, I'll go back to you. Okay, so for me, I'll do item C dash six and then we'll come back. So my question on item C dash six is just clarification, I know we obviously have another item that we're gonna be looking at under new business, but just in terms of clarification with the MOU, so the MOU is just to be able to ensure that we are addressing the regulations under Senate Bill SB thirteen eighty-three for the exclusive soils, waste, recycling, and organics collection services and this specific MOU will take us into twenty twenty-five, but this specific MOU doesn't increase rates for our current residents, for our residents, right? That's my clarification, I just wanna make sure if there's, I thought I had seen something on the last page, so I just wanna make sure it's an MOU, it's extending it to twenty twenty-five for adherence with SB thirteen eighty-three, but is it increasing rates to our residents?
Hi, Don Wilcox, Public Works Director, I'm gonna turn that question over to Elliot with Salina Valley, Salina's Valley's always definitely, you've been office of that, she's connected.
Okay, and it's Elliot?
Elliot.
Elliot, Elliot. Elliot, if you can unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening, council, yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, to answer the question, yes, you are correct, there are no rate increases with the approval of the MOU. It's a pretty much contractual obligations for the franchise holder to do implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three, which he, Tri-City is already well underway with implementing most requirements.
And exhibit B shows the rates, they're staying the same.
Yes, they are staying the same.
Thank you, Elliot, that was my question, just wanted to confirm that, I'm, I'm good with that. Okay, and so council member Gabriela?
Yeah, I found it, it's task three reporting in this. C dash five, I read something that it says that grant key, which is ask we coordinate with local project sponsor staff, retain consultants as needed to prepare and submit progress report on final project completion reports. Is that, is that some special reports or relating to the? The grant that we receive?
So exactly, the grant agreement just comes straight out of the grant agreement, the city shall do all these reports. The main report is every three months we turn in a progress report on what's happening with the grant, make sure all the grant conditions are satisfied and then prior to payment, that of course report has to be approved. So this is directly from the grant agreement that we have with the state that you haven't seen yet because that'll come next council meeting. But we need this consultant helping us administer the grant even through the negotiation of the terms of the agreement.
Basically so that everything goes in the right.
Yes, it's a very regimented process.
Okay.
With a grant of this magnitude, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that and Don, just my question on that, so we need three people to do the reporting because there's three different. Administrative oversight of three different individuals that are gonna be doing the reporting under this grant.
So the city signs off on the report, but MNS will be preparing it on our behalf.
But just so to be clear, there's three individuals that are in the budget to do the reporting.
Oh, their staff, yes, it could be even more or less, primary is Greg Wakess and then two of his assistants and he has four assistants, so it could be any two.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you for that, so we'll, I'll address item C dash ten on the status report, so one, I just wanna say thank you for all of the updates on the status reports, I know we had asked for, I had asked for just an update on where we're at with our Aqua funds, obviously there, we have until twenty twenty-four to ensure that all funds are expended and we wanted to make sure all the projects that we've allocated funding are continuing to move forward. So I just wanna, wanna make sure that I say that, but, but I do want to make sure that we come back for an item that was requested for approval and this was under the police department. I think back in August as well, when we approved the funding for this pot of money, there was a request for that to come back for a written comprehensive youth violence strategic plan to come back to the council for review and approval of that four hundred thousand dollars. And so I know for me, I'm not prepared to be able to approve the plan or to, I think this was more at that council, at that time, the council wanted to come back, wanted it to come back to us so we can have an opportunity to review the written comprehensive violence prevention plan before expenditures took place. And so I didn't see that come back to the council, I saw the report, but I think that's not what the council had requested, so I would ask for this item to come back to us so we can have a written comprehensive prevention plan or how that written comprehension plan is going to be developed. So Mike, do we need to, so I just want that to come, we want, I want that to come back as a council, I think that's what the council had.
So you just wanna receive the update that you, that's in the agenda and ask a direct the, this other item that you just referenced to come back to the council for future consideration presentation?
Correct, and at that time it's a written. Report in terms of the, either a comprehensive violence prevention plan or a plan of how that's, how we're gonna get that. My only concern again is that we're in twenty, I mean, this expenditures have to be done in twenty twenty-four, so we wanna make sure that we, we have what, what, what was articulated by the council and if there's any clarity, I wanna make sure that the council's clear. If this is not, I, I went back to look at the meeting minutes that we had and it was pretty clear, but I just wanna make sure if there's any other comments from the council in terms of the clarity that was provided back then.
No, through the chair, yeah, exactly, let's see, a written proposal and what it all entails and the type of services are gonna be provided by the different organizations and therefore that way we can validate or verify the allocation of funds to go to the type of services we'd like to see coming forward.
Thank you, and I just wanna say thank you first, I know some of the entities are here with the three centers, thank you for the reports provided to and what was in our packet, how I think what we wanna bring it back in the written format. Thank you. Council, any other?
I, I concur.
If I could. I understand the council's direction and so it will take us a few meetings before we're able to come back with a comprehensive document. But I did wanna share with you that the police chief took your direction from previous meetings and developed his, his proposed strategy and it's reflected in his, in this update, but I appreciate that you're asking for a written strategic document, but also point out that some expenditures have been made from the four hundred thousand primarily for the homework center. So the remaining funds would be, those that would be subject to the strategic plan yet to be developed.
So can you show just how many, how much of that has been expended because I wanna make sure that we're clear, I think there was clarity last time that we were, we wanted to make sure that there was a comprehensive plan provided and although I saw the documents that were there, I think, I think some of us really articulated in terms of some of the, the, the strategy that we wanted to see, which is not, I don't think it was what was in here, although we did have some information, but I don't think it was a comprehensive violence prevention strategy that we're looking for.
With, with respect to the expenditures for the homework center, we don't have all the invoices in yet, but when, when talking to staff, my understanding is it will be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty thousand dollars when everything comes in.
Okay, so can we just make sure then that there's clarity that any future expenditures need to come back, we need, the council needs to review and approve that?
Yes.
Thank you, so that's all I had, so then we'll move on. Thank you. So that's all I had. So then we'll move on to the next item of on our agenda, which is business item number one. Also.
Do we not need to?
Oh, sorry, yes, we can't move on because we do need to do we need a motion to be able to approve the the three items. Can I get a motion to approve the three items? Which is C five, C six, and C ten with the direction provided to our city manager?
So move second.
So I'm first and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you for that reminder. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is business item number one, resolution five ninety-six, a resolution of the city council, the city of Saladad approving the release of requests for proposals for collection of solid waste recyclables and organic waste with intent to jointly select and award a contract to one of the franchise waste haulers for each of the South Monterey County cities. Now turn this over to Don.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Don Wilcox, Public Works Director. Going to just give a very brief background on the solid waste enterprise within the city of Saladad. I believe most people who reviewed their utility bill will see two sections of solid waste. One is for collections and one is for disposal. Collections is handled through Tri-Cities disposal and recycling. Subject of this agenda item is to re-advertise for proposals for collection services. That is currently and for as long as I can remember, been provided by Tri-Cities. Tom Pearl is here with Tom, with Tri-Cities if it comes up for any questions. The other entity involved with solid waste for the city of Saladad is the disposal, and that's Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority. Elliot and Patrick are on the line to go through a presentation on this thick packet of this agenda item. Little background as well is Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority also provides the city with administrative services. So they help us with items such as an RFP compliance with the SB one three, one three, three, things of that nature. So that's why I'm going to turn it over to Elliot and Patrick to go through a presentation on this item.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. I'm Patrick Matthews. I'm the general manager, CEO with Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority. So thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate that. So on behalf of the agency, we'd like to provide you a brief update or a brief presentation on the process. Tonight, we will be seeking council authority to release the RFP this coming Friday. We've already received authority or approval from the other three cities, King, Greenfield, and Gonzales. So you are the the last on our tour. If it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and share my screen. Have a, just a very brief presentation with some background information.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
All right, can you see that? Okay?
No.
No.
Great. All right, so.
Well, Patrick, we can't see it.
Can you see the presentation?
No, we can't.
Well, shows that I'm broadcasting. Let's try it one more time.
Select the other monitor.
Stephen, any suggestions?
I'll try it one more time, see if we can.
Now, maybe, can Elliot share it instead?
Yeah, we're not able to see it, Patrick.
I can try sharing my screen.
If you could go ahead, Elliot, I'll stop broadcasting. Not sure why it's not.
Something to do with being an iOS system.
Yeah, it's possible. I am broadcasting from an Apple.
All right, can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
That's it.
Great. All right, thank you, Elliot. I appreciate it. So again, this is a collective request for proposals. So this process actually goes back over a decade. We had off and on discussions with all of the valley cities and the county over the possibility of creating a broader base for collection services than than to have individual contracts or small collectives. Really just to take advantage of the potential for economies of scale. As you know, when you have a single contract with a single city, oftentimes the prices are are higher in the bid process simply because there are overhead costs that the haulers have that have to be passed amongst or shared amongst a smaller customer base. So things like corporation yard, maintenance, customer service, those are things that if you have a larger franchise service area, it does create a potential for some benefit and some cost savings. And so ten, twelve years ago, we had this discussion and basically everybody agreed to have their agreements, their their next or their last extension of agreements to all co terminate on the same date, which is January or June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And so with that, it gives us the opportunity to again do a collective franchise zone as we're proposing here. This is, so this would be a joint effort led by our our agency will be the administrator. We won't be the decision maker on this process, only administering and leading the actual process for the city managers and staff who will be sitting at the table, helping to make selections and listening to the presentations and reviewing proposals from a potential interested companies. It's, it is still written as a very flexible structure. While we're we're going into the RFP with the intent to encourage a single collective franchise zone encompassing all four cities. At the end, the RFP is is still flexible enough that if the city, if the four cities can't agree on a single vendor that they all like, you can still revert back to selecting someone different or having individual singular contracts or some collective that's smaller than than just the four cities. So but we're we're looking for the best opportunity and that is, we believe, a a fully combined agreement for all four cities. So the current agreement you have in your packet has been updated with all the new state regulations. Very similar to the MOU you approved under consent, which is really just a stopgap. And so we can put in place a brand new, fully compliant agreement. So you have that in your packet along with the RFP itself. And the intent here is to standardize services, programs, and rates across the South Salinas Valley. Next slide, please. The key elements, basically very similar to what you already have. You have three cart system for residential garbage, recycling, and organics. They're all going to be required under thirteen eighty-three. They're required to have universal color coding, which is already in place in your service area. Blue for recycling, green for organics, and black, gray, or dark brown for refuse. You also will have curbside motor oil and filter recycling, used battery collection, and up to three bulky item collections per year per customer. Those can be done all at one time, or they can be spread out, single, single item collections at different times during the course of each year. Next slide, please. Very similar to the residential services, the commercial services, again standardized labeling, increased requirement for tracking, reporting, and compliance with diversion mandates under other assembly bills as well as their assembly incentive bills other than SB thirteen eighty-three. But that is one of the biggest drivers of the changes in the agreement itself. There will be a minimum requirement of provision or providing recycling services equivalent in capacity to your solid waste services. So we call this a fifty fifty capacity where you get a two-yard bin picked up once a week, you'll get a two-yard recycling bin of the same size and frequency picked up twice a week as well. And then the ability to add additional capacity above that, if you're a super recycler or you just generate a lot of recyclable materials at a discounted rate over the solid waste rate for that same size container. So we go sort of the best of both worlds and provides adequate service levels for all cus- commercial customers to comply with all the regulations such as AV eighteen twenty-six. And again, they will also receive, the commercial customers will also receive the three bulky goods collection options per year. And those bulky good collection options are typically done, not typically, they are done by appointment. So all a customer will have to do is call up customer service and say, hey, we want you to come pick up an old fridge, a sofa, something, something of that nature. And the hauler has, I believe it's a week or ten days to schedule the appointment with that customer and the date and time for that item to be put out as a curb for pickup. Next slide, please. So again, several key elements, other services that are provided. They will provide collection services, bins and boxes for up to three annual community cleanup events, two annual litter and debris removal events that that could be parks, waterways, other things that the city would like to clean up because of excess litter. And up to six special events, again, providing boxes, bins for recycling and garbage and if needed, where it's a food event, also organics collection. Next slide, please. So a few other proposal elements. You already have this in your agreement. So this will be a continuation of what you already have, and that's optional street sweeping on collection routes. That would be required by the hauler to conduct that sweeping within twenty-four hours of collection along the collection route itself, because as we know in the Windy Valley, we can see some litter loss during collection because the collection system is not completely sealed when the bins are tipping into the cart. And sometimes some windblown litter and other things can can be released. There's also optional reimbursement to the cities for billing. The three, what we call Tri-Cities, which is Gonzales, Saladad, and Greenfield currently have a collective agreement. But you do the billing for that service. Under this RFP, the haulers are asked to assume that they are doing all the billing for all the cities. However, if you, if any of the cities want to continue to do their own billing, then the hauler will reimburse you their cost for providing billing. That is a requirement to be provided in the RFP response. They also will be reimbursing all the parties involved. That'd be the four cities and the authority for our direct expenses for this procurement process. That would be staff time, legal time primarily to build, both build this RFP and then all the administrative work that's going to go on over the next year as far as evaluations and consideration. They will also reimburse each city up to twenty-five thou- or actually a flat amount of twenty-five thousand dollars per year to support your SB thirteen eighty-three compliance requirements. That could be things like code enforcement, inspections, and other activities that are required by the city itself as part of those compliance programs. And then finally, they will be also continuing to reimburse both the city and the authority for the ongoing annual administrative costs. The city will be receiving ten thousand dollars per year for administrative expenses. That would be again, staff, legal time, and the authority, twenty thousand dollars as your contract administrator to continue the work we're currently doing. Next slide. So here's the interesting part, the timeline. The timeline starts with July one of twenty twenty-five being the start date for the new agreement. And so we start at at the end and we work ourselves forward in terms of timeline. If you end up selecting an incumbent to provide these services, typically the transition time for an incumbent is very, is very short. They can, they can bring to bear all the changes they have to do in a very short period of time. However, you do want to give a a timeframe of at least eight months, but preferably twelve for a new hauler, if you were to select someone that does not have a local presence. They do have a lot, a lot larger workload to get ready. They have to buy trucks, carts, bins. There's just a whole lot of work, set up their courtyard. All those things take a long time. And of course, with supply chain challenges, that just adds to it. So we really want to see this contract in place by June of twenty twenty-four. That's, that's just a little over a year away. And so from there, you can see the schedule. We're scheduled, we're scheduled with your approval tonight to release the RFP on Friday. We received letters of intent. That is basically the calling card for the hauler to continue in the process. They do not submit a letter of intent. Then they cannot continue on in the process. So that, we give them almost a month to really make that decision and to to evaluate the the service area, the proposal, and those kind of things, and make that final decision. Currently, we have eight interested parties in, or waiting on another handful of potential bidders that to reply back to our request for interest. And if they do that, then they'll be directly mailed the notice when the RFP is placed online for for bidding. And then we'll also be doing some advertising through solid waste organizations as well to broaden the, broaden our reach. But we do have all the really significant local haulers on that initial distribution list. So we go through this. Of course, you see we have questions, answers. The submittal deadline is June thirtieth. We'll be doing interviews in the month of August and then conducting a public presentation with the selected proposer. So during the interview process, we may choose to shortlist down to a shorter number of what we feel are the the highest quality proposals, or we may not. It just depends on how many responses we get. But we do want to include the public in this process and give them an opportunity to ask questions and hear information on all the potential vendors. And then finally, getting into negotiations and final recommendations. The end of this year and into the early part of next year, negotiating with the final selected vendor takes some time. And then obviously, you want to have some final opportunity in a few months to have public deliberation and comment prior to minutes. So that's the timeline in a nutshell. You could go to the next slide, please. And then finally, the process itself, we have six general criteria for selecting these haulers. We look at their qualifications, experience. We look at their technical capabilities and experience and things like routing and operating comparable systems and in and that type of thing, contractual issues. If contractors have a lot of issue with the template contract, you know, we want to hear what their concerns are. But again, if they're adverse to the benefits of the city, those things can be taken into consideration and evaluation as well. Their financial strength, their ability to finance and bring to bear quickly the cash necessary to upgrade their fleet and system to comply with the contract. And finally, costs, you know, there will be looking at comparing the bid costs for all the different services between all of the bidders, as well as comparing those regionally to costs we see in the Monterey, Greater Monterey County area. And then general overall attainment, are these proposals designed to achieve the the goals and objectives of of the cities, which we've outlined on the right-hand column. So those are, those will be the, really the basic evaluation criteria that the city managers and staff will be using to to make these final decisions and recommendations to council. Next slide, please. So with that, I will stop here for some questions. And again, we are seeking authorization via your resolution to release that RFP starting this Friday.
Patrick, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate that. If we can get, can we get a copy of your slides?
Yes, actually, we sent them, but it was too. Yes, actually, we sent them, but it was too late. I think the clerk does have them, but we can definitely send them again. We just didn't get them over in time for posting.
Yeah, that would be helpful, just a summarization instead of the hundred and ninety-four pages. I know it's important, but I think it helps us just to kind of make sure that we understand all the different components and the evaluation process and what the timeline as well. So thank you for that. I, let me take it out to the public first and then I'll bring it back to council if we're okay with that for any comments or questions. So so let me do any members of the public that are joining us here in the chamber. Yeah, Mr. Corolla, hey, Tom.
Hello, I'm Mayor and council members. I just wanted to, obviously, I'm Tom Corolla, Tri-Cities disposal recycling. Providing the services nineteen ninety-seven, and we will be putting out a letter of intent to bid this contract. Just wanted to bring over a few key points. Patrick showed you and highlighted a lot of stuff that this new contract's going to have. Majority of the stuff you already have. And to some point at a higher level. So I just wanted to make it that known, things like the recycling, and we have accounts have a thirty-five gallon garbage cart and have a four cubic yard recycling dumpster and three ninety-six gallon cars, something like that. There is, and they're not being charged for extra recycling for that. The large item collection, we do up to ten stops per year, up to four items per stop. We're already starting doing, cart colors are already in place. We are ahead of the curve for thirteen eighty-three, and the county, we're probably Tri-Cities might be the farthest ahead in the county. I'm not going to say that a hundred percent because I don't know everybody, but I'm on two different landfill boards. So I, in the problem meetings. But that was basically it. And the other question too is, or the other thing too is the billing. We do pay a franchise fee to the city, which is supposed to cover the billing expenses. Obviously, if that agreement or this new agreement wants to do it a different way, we're open to it. We don't, I do Monterey City disposal, we bill Monterey, city of Monterey. I have the ability to bill. And lastly, the economy of scales always work out. I'll let you know that for for a fact because the Regen Monterey, which is formerly our regional waste management director, years ago went out and did a bid to ten cities on the other side of the river, but the Monterey Bay side. City Monterey jumped out of it, said they weren't going to do it. The other nine cities did do it. And every time I go for a rate increase in Monterey, and we do a rate comparison, mine are always on average way lower. So one small company is doing lower rates than these bigger, larger companies. And the other thing is we are locally based, one percent.
Thank you, Tom, for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Okay, any other, let me take it up to our virtual Zoom. Any comments from those that are joining us on Zoom? Okay, I don't see any. Okay, I don't see any. So I'll bring, I'll bring it back to the, to the council for for questions and comments on this item. Council, and I just want to start, if I can, just with a couple of comments in regards to the, the information of the presentation. Patrick, thank you for providing us with that information. I, I just, for me, a lot of stuff comes up and I'm glad that Tom was here to make his comments as well. Obviously, I know that we haven't gone out to bid in a long time, and so we want to make sure that we afford that opportunity. But I think for me also is really looking at, you know, for me, I'm going to be really looking at cost service analysis and making sure that, you know, our residents don't have to pay. Obviously, we know there's going to be some cost increases because of our organic waste recycling now that's going to have that, comes with a lot of other regulations and provisions that the cities need to adhere to. But I think for me, it's really important. I mean, some of my questions is, you know, can, is it, is it feasible to do it now? And I guess we have to, we're going out to bid and that conversation started many years ago. But for me, is I just want to make sure that our residents are going to be able to afford any of the new, any of the rates, because right now our residents, you know, based on what we, we have to do this process of ensuring that our, that there's an increase in rates. And typically, it's based on CPI, and that's the only kind of, you know, rates that we have and we have to keep up with with that, right? But for me, it's just concerning because I know that you know, waste management went out in the peninsula also, and they went out for an RFP and a new contract was hired, and some of the other costs that they didn't take into consideration, you know, was the, the Kansas service, the fleet facilities. You know, bringing in a lot of that, I think for us as a council, we have to be able to look at what kind of service is coming? What kind of service do we currently have? And for me, it is, you know, is it going to be a benefit and cost to our rate payers? Or are we going to say, we're going to, you know, here's someone else that's coming, but yet there's all these other things that need to happen, fleets that need to be purchased and all these other things. And maybe not at the beginning for our rate payers, but that it's going to be increased later. And I think that's what the peninsula saw, that the rate increases weren't the first year. But there was a lot of stuff that happened after year one, and there was a lot of concerns in terms of the level of service. And I just have to say, I know, you know, Tri-Cities has done, you know, a great job. I just want to emphasize the fact that locally, the cleanups that we have had do include a lot of our youth groups that are included as part of those stipends that are given to our NJROTC. I mean, there's a lot that has been provided to us in terms of some of the services. And I just want to make sure that when this evaluation process is taking place, that we are looking at and considering all of those cost services and that there's minimal, there's going to be increases because I get it. But that there's no significant increases that our residents are going to see after year one or after year two, because it was going to be more that we didn't take into consideration. That's my comment in terms of just moving forward with this RFP. So I will turn it over to Mayor Potem Jimenez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank Patrick for that thorough presentation and Elliot. And as, as a member and representative of this board of this council on the Sinofoli Solid Waste Authority, I can share with you, that's exactly what we do. And that's exactly one of the first and foremost priority for myself, is ensure our rate payers and those that have a difficult time or below that poverty line, that we're cognizant of that when we're looking at all increases or any additional fees and how that bears on the family out there that are trying to just get by. And we understand that, and I know for myself as well, is that how that affects the family and their budget. So, yes, I think with, with the opportunity to go out there and take bids, I think that's a prudent process to ensure that we're getting the best quality service at the lowest rate possible. And that if, you know, it comes back and maybe Tri-Cities is it, and I have to try and switch out my trash cans, I'm okay with it. But if not, then it would be one that first and foremost is, is that they're capable of doing the job. And two, that they're keeping the, that we're keeping the, the rates as low as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to kind of echo the same. I guess, thinking, I was honestly surprised that there was eight interested parties in in bidding. And I do appreciate Tom coming out and, you know, talking to us and and living us of the awesome service that you guys offer. I do believe though that we do owe it to our community to look at pricing. I think it was last year, I want to say, that our water was increased, and I believe it's going to be increasing. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think within five years it's going to continue to increase. So you know, we definitely want to what's it called, advocate for our, for our community. And, you know, we do want to have good service, and we also want to have a portable service. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I think I've seen the wonderful work that Tri-Cities has done for all of these years. I know that this is a process that has been agreed upon for years and years to go through RFP. And I think it's, you know, we need, we, we, we owe it to our community to take a look at the, at the, at the process and see what's there. You know, having a local company, hopefully, that already has the, you know, has the carts, has the vehicles, has the knowledge of the area, you know, hopefully that is good enough for that process to move forward and they end up in the, you know, at the end as being one of those haulers and one of our companies that is there for us here in this area. And, but you know, I want to thank Tom for all the work he's done over the years because he's anytime any school or anybody wants to do any kind of project, they're there and right on it quickly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember James.
I'm right for everybody's, please play the same. I don't want to repeat again, but thank you so much for the work that you have done. And I will run away for the community meeting so that we can see what the, the people want and etc. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So just again, local jobs, I mean, many of our drivers are locally, are from the, our local area as well. And I think that's really important to us as a city. I just have one question though, Patrick, for you, is in terms of the components for the disposal for the, the organic. So that's still going to be taken to Johnson Canyon, right? Regardless of who the hauler is or who is on the RFP, they still have the capacity to be able to process all of that organic separation or whatever, all these regulations that we have. So it's not going to require, hey, we need to build a facility to be able to accommodate for all of these new regulatory provisions?
Yes, we, we built capacity, had built capacity the last several years, adequate to serve all of our member agencies, including the city of Salinas and the county. So yes, we have the capacity that is in the template agreement as the designated processing facility, as is the landfill for the designated waste disposal. The only component that is subject to really the hauler's recommendation, and that is the processing of recyclables. So as you know, we have two of those facilities in the county. One at Regen Monterey and then Tom Perola's facility that serves you as well as two of the other Valley Cities and the city of Monterey. So for those two, they have their own processing plants. Others will have to propose how they're going to do it, who they're going to take it to, who's going to process their recycling. But organics and garbage does come with the authority.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question.
And I just have one question for you, Patrick. You know, in a lot of different RFPs that are done, I know this one, I didn't see anywhere in there. Is there anything that has to do with the local preference at all or any extra points for that? Just curious about that.
Yeah, I think, I, I, again, I think those are things that we can all consider in general, because the contract doesn't specifically say you have to buy local. But there are a couple of provisions in there. For instance, the corporation yard has to be within the jurisdiction of one of the cities. That assures that the tax, the sales taxes will come in to the cities there. Obviously, I think in terms of drivers and other employees, I've done a few of these or participated in a few of these RFPs in my career and it would, I've never seen a haul, I've never seen a changed hauler, a new hauler coming in, not rehire all of the line level people. So things like drivers. It's just a matter of smart business. You don't bring in inexperienced drivers when you have a whole fleet of drivers. So often, there's a discussion around transition that occurs during negotiations. If, if it were to be someone other than than an incumbent. But again, you have great flexibility in this RFP. Really, you know, you, we can get to the end of this thing and and your, your representatives at the table can say, you know, we just don't like it. We want to go back to what we were doing before. Or we can see that maybe there's some benefit actually to having one more city join this collective in this process and have a more comprehensive uniform system across the whole South Valley. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. And I like your lettuce behind you.
That's, I'm sorry, that's actually, that's actually cotton.
What is it?
It's cotton.
Really? It looks like lettuce.
I have, I have, I have close friends in, in the, in the Central Valley. I just happened to
Well, thank you.
Beautiful picture.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Next time, just have lettuce.
I have the lettuce. I'll, I'll put my lettuce back on on next time.
Thank you, Patrick. So council, if there is no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Fifty-nine twenty-six?
Fifty-nine twenty-six.
So we have a, a motion on the floor. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Thank you, Patrick, and Elliot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Okay, so council, I'd like to make a modification if we can, because I know we have some members of the public that have been, that are here with us, and some of the items might take a little bit longer. But can, are you okay if we move up item B dash five and B dash six? And then take on the other items, as I think those are going to go fairly quickly. Are we okay with that? Yeah. Could be dash seven? No, the, the, I think that's B dash five and B dash six. Discussion on seven, so let's do five and six, because we have members up here. So can we? I know, it's already nine. Okay, so we'll do B dash five, and that's measure S citizens oversight committee appointment. So who are you, you providing us with that report?
Members, Mayor and members of the council, this is a nine-member committee designed to both oversee expenditures and make recommendations on the, on the measured S funds. There, it's a nine-member commission, a committee, excuse me. There's one vacancy representing animal services. And under the resolution we've adopted for implementation of measure S, this is the mayor's appointment subject to approval by the city council.
Yes, thank you. And part of that, everybody, we see the application. And so the appointment recommendation brought forward today for your approval is to approve Jennifer Avellino, who's here with us for the appointment in the specific area of animal services. So is there any questions? And if not, then I don't know. Council, any questions? Do we want to entertain a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations. Congratulations. We look forward to having you on measure S. Thank you, Jennifer, sticking with us. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item. Which is item B dash six, and it's measure Y citizens oversight committee appointment. And this is the appointments for two of our council members, current council members. So I will turn this over to Ed, our city manager.
This is a five-member committee similar to the work of measure S, but it's called colloquially known as measure Y, extended by measure I, it's a temporary sales tax measure. The committee has the same purpose, to oversee the expenditures and to make recommendations. Five-member committee appointed by each of the members of the council. The two vacancies are available to be appointed by council members Cabrera and Corolejo. And if they are prepared to make an appointment, they should announce it at this time.
Yes, and I think we received the application. So council member, councilwoman Coraleo?
Um, yes, thank you. My appointment is he's a veteran, he's a former law enforcement, NITO lead coach. He works locally, and it's Dylan Fletcher, and I just wanted to say welcome to measure, to commit the committee for measure one.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm, I'm not Mr. Fletcher, but I've been communicating with Mr. Fletcher, and he's got a Neil family member, and he wasn't sure if he'd make it down, but he can't do that because he's taking care of his family.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to put that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for letting us know that he was not able to be here. Okay, so we have the recommendation for Mr. Dylan Fletcher, and then I'll turn it over to
Well, my recommendation is Max, and what about himself, then I could probably, thank you for being here.
You want me to say something you're saying?
Something about yourself, so to say.
Your honor, another council member is in the public. I'm honored to be here and opportunity. I'm retired Navy Master Chief. I've been retired Navy twenty-four years. I currently teach high school at Edward Alvarez High School. I'm the NJROTC instructor. I was here at Solidad in two thousand twelve and thirteen, and illness in my father, sacro mento, man, I need illness of my father, sacro mento, man, I needed leave. And when I came back, the program was better than I left it and Captain Gomez, the best thing I've did is hiring him. And so there's no positions. That's why I went to Albers. I'm trying to be active in the community. I'm a new board member on the Solidad Community Healthcare District and I'm honored to participate and make an impact. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have two appointments on the board if we can get.
No motion is necessary.
Perfect, thank you. And so I just want to say, apologize, Jen. I know that we had the individual speak and next time I'll open it up for you. If you want to say a few words, just because we gave the other representatives an opportunity. So can council, are we okay if we want to say a few words, Jen?
Well, I know most of you already. My name is Jennifer Abellino, great for anybody who doesn't know me. I'm a business owner here at One Positive Climate Pet grooming business. And I'm very, very, very excited and honored to be a part of the measure S committee. Primarily because it's dealing with animals directly or I get a say or kind of help to steer in that direction to cover for animals. Animals are absolutely incredible, although most of our clientele is dogs. We have a love and a compassion for all animals. Animals have been clinically known to lower our blood pressure, to help our anxiety, to get up, get us off the couch and away from the screen and exercise a little bit more. Because of that, you know, we have that ability to offer services and resources to those animals, kind of like, oh, thank you. Solid is a completely different city that I, than what I grew up in. Back then, we didn't know any better. Now we do. And we have the ability to make changes. So that's what I'm excited to be a part of. And I really, really appreciate you inviting me to be a part of that and for all of you agreeing to allow me to. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. You're amazing. Bendit loves you. Thank you, Jen. Okay, well, congratulations to all of those appointments that were made tonight. And just to go back to some of the comments, we can bring it back. And in regards to attendance, especially, we want to make sure these two committees are really critical when it comes to making decisions, bringing back recommendations to the council. So I don't know if we have an attendance policy and that we make sure that people are attending. And if they're not, then it comes back to the council to be able to appoint someone else. Because we don't want it to be a year and then people haven't been attending. And you know, we don't have, we don't have that, what we told the public when those two measures came about that there was going to be an oversight committee and we're not doing that. And so I want to make sure we bring that back in terms of these are the policies for the individuals that are going to be part of the committee. And they know that if they miss a certain amount of time, then the council can come back and appoint someone else. Thank you for that. And then just for me, I know Christopher Almaraz is someone I appointed and he did mention he was never contacted. So can we make sure he knows? Okay, okay.
In the beginning, though.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so just make sure we have, everybody knows that they're part of these committees. Okay, good. Thank you, council. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda and it's item B dash two. Take action necessary for the formation of an advisory committee, districting committee. And I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor and council. On February fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three, the council held its third notice public meeting on the transition to by district voting. And at that meeting, the council suggested that the city engage in the formation of an advisory community districting committee to provide an assistant gathering committee, community input and provide some input on the maps that have been submitted to date. And then on March first of two thousand twenty-three, the council provided staff with guidance as to the number of members we'd like to have on this new advisory committee and how the members would be selected. The majority of the council agreed at that meeting that the committee would be comprised of five members from the community at large with the mayor and each council member appointing a member. This evening, the council is requesting, council, the staff is requesting that the mayor and the council announce their appointments to the Solidad Advisory Community Districting Committee and that you also provide staff with some feedback on the actual mission statement or goal of the committee as well as the schedule for meetings, although obviously not specific dates, but I reached out to our consultants at NDC to ask them what other similar committees had done. And they provided me with the information that's in the staff report. Basically, they said at this time, committees like this are often formed at the very onset of the process and do a lot of the the community outreach and so forth and so on. And that's already past that stage at this point. We have already received maps and we've already held three meetings and so forth. So primarily, the goal would be to have this advisory committee hold hearings or meetings where the community could come, provide input, and they themselves then could comment on that input and provide comment on the maps that have been received to date. So they were suggesting that they probably didn't need more than two of these meetings. But obviously, it's the council's discretion as to how many meetings they want to have. Our consultant also indicated that although there are varieties of maps that have been submitted and probably may still be submitted, that because of the size and the location of the voting blocks in the city, there's a limited number of variations on the theme. There's only so many ways we can rearrange the furniture in the house, right? And so this is not a type of a task for a committee that you would find in a much larger city like Salinas or San Jose or something like that. But nonetheless, this is a valuable effort on the part of the the city council to continue to sort of beat the bushes and get community input on this issue. So that's what we are requesting, staff's requesting this evening is that the the council members and the mayor make their appointments to the committee and then you provide some direction with respect to the scope of the duties of the committee that's being formed. And thereafter, we would then notify the committee members and try to get a schedule for when they would hold their meetings. We would probably not want to hold the first one of these committee members meetings until after we have this mapping event that we're going to have either on the first of April or the ninth of April. I think those are the dates that have been given to me, two Saturdays that they have available. And where the plan is to hold the English and the Spanish meetings back to back on those dates. And we will have a translator working with the NDC staff to make the presentation in Spanish on one of those dates.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. And I just wanted to reflect on the record because it didn't reflect on the report. So I, I was not in agreement. Obviously, I wanted more than the five-member committee to be able to allow for additional inputs. I just want that to be reflected.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, it indicates a majority of the council agreed. It didn't say that there was unanimous decision on the part of the council as to how that was going to be done.
Yeah, just wanted to be on record. Yeah, thank you for that. So so let's do the first thing, then the appointments to the advisory committee. And so you want us to, just each member, say it, say out loud who our appointment is going to be and then we'll take. Is that how we're going to do it?
That'd be fine. The same process that we just used in having the.
Okay, okay. So I'll start with council member Gavara.
I appoint Fernando Saldo Sanchez.
Okay. And council member Chavez?
You know, I was thinking about a lot of good members out. So I'd like to see if I could appoint Sandy Forte.
Okay. The funny thing is, I actually had Sandy Forte written down on here and I spoke to her yesterday. Some of her, we spoke to her, but we have, I tried to, I tried to look up what the. And I, and I have no other backup because she had already, we had already discussed that she had.
Go ahead, go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what, then? You know what, I'll, I'll go ahead and appoint former mayor Fred Ludesmuth.
Okay, she'll appreciate that. And, and, uh, council, mayor pretend?
I got a couple, a couple in line. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and appoint Urban Ortiz.
Urban?
Get some business in for this too.
Okay, and then my appointment, I'll, my appointment is Monica Andrade. To the committee.
Want to change my appointment?
Can you change it? No, just kidding. No, you can. You can. You can take it. Okay, so, so we did the first portion of it. So the appointments have been made. And the next is the scope of committee activities and schedule. So so I agree, just in terms of the timeframe, council, that the committee meet after the workshops to give an opportunity for our input from our community in terms of the mapping and being able to to understand and see what else comes up. But do you have been more specific in terms of how many times should they meet? I know that in the report, it says the proposal was two meetings and obviously there is increased cost as well to that, right? So we know that there's going to be increased costs. They're not, they're fairly nominal, but but if there's additional, then I'm assuming if we want to increase the meeting, the meeting timeframe, if we do three or four meetings, that it's going to increase the cost as well?
That's correct. So there's a per meeting cost. I mean, my, I guess my initial suggestion would be to take NDC's recommendation and set two meetings. And then if there, you get input from your advisory committee that they think that they need additional meetings and so forth, then you can certainly arrange for more of those as long as you approve the costs and so forth.
Okay, so council, do you have any, any comments? So I'll start with council member Gavara. So that way we can see if we can approve that and then move on.
I was thinking more like three, three. So just in case three meetings, I think it's good enough for looking at the session so that you can have both English and Spanish recommendations and comments.
Okay. So we have a recommendation for three.
I'm okay with two. I'm okay with three.
Okay.
And this is just about the meetings?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the two or three. I was thinking maybe it would be a good idea to have them attend at this point of the mapping meetings, not, not to speak, but just to observe and to, to listen.
But I think that's part of it. So they'll be attending. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it's all good. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with two meetings. And if we need a third, that's fine. We move to a third, it's up to the advisory committee.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I recommend that we do three. And so that way there's three and then plus the two workshops. And then it could be determined if there's a need for another meeting. If there's not, then at least we have three meetings to be able to do as much outreach as possible.
We need a meeting to set up three meetings?
No, we're not going to do that. Advisory committee is going to do it.
Okay. And NDC too. They will actually be overseeing and helping guide the meeting.
That just means council, just for clarification, because there is a cost to that. So she said her cost meeting was twenty-two, two thousand seven hundred twenty-seven fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be three times, right? Two, four, six. So seven thousand.
Seventy-one hundred.
Seventy-one hundred, thank you. So we're good with that.
Okay, so three meetings scheduled on is what I'll provide the guidance. And then in terms of the actual
mission statement or goal, did anybody have any problems with the the recommendation again that we received from NDC that the the primary task should be to review the maps, either those that have been submitted by the consultant or those that are submitted by members of the public and to make recommendations to the council on the committee's preferred map choice or choices. There was also some thought that NDC would encourage these individual members who on this advisory committee to reach out to the public as well. They don't necessarily have to have all the input received at meetings, but they can actually network within the community itself and bring back information. So, okay.
Yeah, and I think that's important because I think that's what some of the discussion that took place last time, just to make sure that we're inclusive and the more people are aware of it, the better. So, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree with you as well. The chair is that they get input and then again, they look at all the maps and and give us the recommendation from that group. Yeah. That's the best way to go with it.
Okay, council, do we need a motion? I think we're good.
Yeah, I think that that's fine. I don't know if you wanted to ask for any public comment.
Yes, yes. So let me go out to the public, those that are joining us here in the public. If there's any public comments on item B dash two. Okay, those that are joining us via Zoom, are there any public comments on item B dash two? Okay, and I don't see any. Oh, you do? Okay, I don't see it. Okay, yes. So, oh, Fernando. Okay, Fernando, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I think before I got kicked out of the meeting, right when I started talking, so I wasn't able to. But that's fine. I just want to, excuse me, I just want to thank council member Cabrera for his appointment. And then before my comment, just really quick, recognizing that it's Women's History Month and kudos to Mayor of Alaska for making history. Solidad's first mayor, that's a woman. And also kudos to Councilwoman Coraleco for being a prominent businesswoman in Solidad. I'm just writing, I'm not writing. I was going to submit it and then I ended up coming. I just wanted to express, I guess, concern over the previous council meeting decision on the committee. I know that council member Gavara and Mayor of Alaska advocated for community engagement that by appointing additional members into the committee. Well, not having five appointees and six members of the community appointed through an application process. I think this would have been a little bit more equitable. I also feel like we should have let a representative of LULAC partake in this. I did find it concerning that, I think specifically, council member Chavez was against this. LULAC is a civic civil rights organization with experience in advocating for voting rights and their insight should be welcomed. Instead of excluded, especially if the intent is to have an equitable process, I know that things might not be able to get changed now since it already happened. I just did want to at least say that as a community member, again, speaking, just as myself, not representing anybody else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fernando, for your comments. Do we have anyone else? I don't see anybody else. No, okay. So we'll close the public comment period on this item and then the public comment on this item. And I think there was enough direction then to move forward.
There's room for another comment?
Is, sure, is it a different comment? Yeah.
No, well, I'm just saying that for full transparency, LULAC is on, on, on the advisory committee. We have a member of LULAC that if I'm not mistaken, is on the advisory committee, correct?
Well, I, I don't. So, yeah, so, so she is a member of LULAC. However, I'm not sure that that's what LULAC had intended, like a member of the advisory committee or a member of the board, which is different.
Okay, but there is a representative on, on the committee. So we're going to get their input as well and the perspective in addition to the public. So we'll, they'll have that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, so council, then we will move on. If there's no other comments on this item, I think direction has been provided.
Just through the chair, darling, are you going to need contact information from these five appointees?
The only one, no.
Okay.
I have everybody's information.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on then to our next item, which is item B dash three. So we're going to receive a staff report and the community input session on homeless response held on February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and I will turn this over to Brian.
Hi, good evening. Tensia is going to give a presentation, our point, but I'd like to give a little background of quick as a council. On October nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two, the city council adopted a leaving home five-year plan update of Monterey and San Diego County. The Leaving Home Plan provides a five-year roadmap for the Monterey and San Diego County continuum of care and its partners to achieve the vision that all people in the region live in a decent, safe and affordable housing from which they access services and supports and support services that stabilize their lives. At that time, council directed staff to conduct a community workshop so that the community could discuss possible next steps, provide feedback in the five-year plan. On February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, city staff with the assistance of Jenny Lucas Conwell, the executive, executive director of the organization, conducted a community input session on homeless response. One of the key components of the input session was that when the, when the audience participated in three separate groups with the, with discussion questions that allowed the audience to provide their recommendations on the subject matter. Tensia has a presentation in which she'll highlight the different focus groups. And we will then be available for any questions the council may have on the recommendations. Thank you. And uh, we will then be available for any questions uh the council may have on the recommendations. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Tensia Barcas. I am the Economic Development and Housing Program Coordinator for the city. So um as Brian stated, on, in February, we did uh hold a workshop. We invited the public. Um, and we invited the council and staff to participate in this important workshop where we were getting and requesting feedback from the public themselves and from the community as far as like, what is their expectation? What do we need to do as a city to make sure that we support this effort? Um, there was a lot of feedback that was provided and we do appreciate everyone um that attended. So I will be sharing my screen. So on the February um eighteen, um Genevieve was present. Um, she works with the Coalition for, of homeless services providers. She's been a key um person involved in this effort. Um, as far as support, information, training, I mean, she is our key resource that we go to. Um, this is new territory for us as staff members. I myself have never dealt with homelessness, um, the unsheltered, unhoused. Um Personally, I do have two family members that are in that condition right now. Um, so I do know firsthand what they're going through. Um, but as far as like a city representative, I've never dealt with it. So Genevieve has been key in this effort. Um so at the um workshop, workshop, I'm gonna close this off. Uh, the, so what we did is we asked, the uh Genevieve was able to uh give a presentation as far as what the five-year plan, the expectation, what it meant and what was adopted back last year. Um, the, the audience was separated into three groups and separate tables. In each table, we discussed different types of strategies. Uh, the areas that we discussed was number one was increased stakeholders engagement. Strategy area number two was to improve the performance of the homelessness system. Uh, strategy area number three was expand services oriented responses to the unsheltered. So in the first um table, we discussed, so what we did is in each table, we uh had a couple of questions. Um, some of the tables were able to go through all the questions um and some weren't. But it, it kind of started the conversation. So one of the key thing, one of the first things in strategy one area uh we discussed was one of the key questions was, what do you think the city of Solidad needs to prioritize when it comes to local solutions to homelessness? So some of the information that they, the feedback that we got was uh create yourself government policy within the encampments. Um, they would like to see tiny homes built within, uh, and within guidelines, with set guidelines. Uh, transparency from council and city officials, local government. They want you involved in this uh support. Engage the business community in homeless efforts. They also want the support from the business community. Uh, they want the, continue the, uh, they want us to continue to provide food for them. Community shelters for dogs and pets, um, especially in this time of need right now with the floods. Um, some of the unhe- unsheltered, um, do have dogs and pets who that they will, you know, if they need to be evacuated, they now need to find a home for them. Um, support and provide wraparound services. And then help them with starting a nonprofit within the group. Um, I example, one of the examples that came up was Sancho Cielo. So this is something that they're doing, um, you know, something to that effect. Then the second question that we discussed was how can our political system be a part of the regional discussion to end the homelessness? Some of the answers were our council can be a voice for the unhoused. Representation on city council by creating a solid at homeless committee. Having policies in place that address the homeless issues that help ensure they remain places, that they remain in place years. Um, this is setting policies that will be in place. So if, you know, five, ten years from now, there's, there's something in place for them. Um, another question was how can we create structures and processes to meaningfully involve people who are experiencing homelessness locally? Um, some of the odd solutions that they offered was allowing public land to be available to the homeless during extreme weather. You know, exactly what's going on right now. So um, having a designated person in each city that can aid the homelessness. The homeless establishing emergency assistance via housing vouchers. I think it's just a computer.
Yeah.
And then lastly, how does a city of Solidad make sure that it is creating an equitable response to homelessness? Giving every person an opportunity for services, no matter the general religion, et cetera. No unshelter left behind, having that mindset. And then by treating each person with dignity, keeping in mind that, that we are all human. Helping create a phone resource app that allows those needing services, the ability to access it on their own phone. A lot of these, one thing that they mentioned that, you know, even though they are unsheltered and they're in the homeless situation, um, they do have access to phones. So giving maybe create, helping create an app that they can um reach out to some of the resources that are available to them. On table number two, um, the strategy improving the performance of a homelessness response system. Um, they started off with a question is how do you envision the city of Solidad participating and increasing outreach? The response was a city of Solidad could seek an MOU with the county of Monterey who primarily has these services. Again, this is new territory for us as staff. You know, we already know that the county of Monterey does have a lot of resources that are available to cities and having maybe an MOU, this is something that they brought up, having the agreement that we can collaborate with other resources and bringing them here. Uh, services to parents who have students in schools but need assistance with finding housing and resources. Um, I don't know, some of you may not even know that some of the students are unhoused. They are unsheltered. So where do they sleep? They sleep in their cars. Um, and some of them, we've seen them actually in our parking lot. Um, and we're at the Gateway Center. So just something to keep in mind and be aware of. How do you see the city of Solidad expanding housing solutions? Through community financial literacy, by using city-owned make lots for the homeless by allowing access to water, um, utilities, um, things that they need. What do you think is the best way for the city of Solidad to support its residents and retaining housing and ensuring that folks do not return to homelessness, allowing for denser housing to be available? Um, that could be a challenge if we don't have any more property to grow. Um, but that's something that they would like to see um be available for the, um, for the unhoused, for the homeless. Table number three, it's uh strategy area number three, expand services oriented responses to unsheltered homelessness. What do you think the highest needs are to support encampments in the city of Solidad? Mental health services, mobile healthcare services that can provide mental health services, substance abuse assistance, et cetera. That list can actually go on and on and on. It's more of a finding out um what other services they need because once you house them, if that doesn't solve the solution, it's providing mental health. Um, you know, just physical health, um, you know, assistance in other areas. Um, transportation services, that's something else that they brought up. Um, a lot of these services are available to them, but they're not available to them in Solidad. So therefore, how do they reach to that type of service that may be available in Monterey or Salinas? How can the city of Solidad partner with our lived, experienced population about how to meet their needs? Allowing those that have experienced homelessness to share their life experience. Allowing those who have dealt with mental health issues, share their life experience and how they recover or found help. Organize meetings with our unsheltered committee to hear from them and voice what types of programs they actually need. So one key thing that it was really good to have is we did have someone who has gone through the system. Uh, we did have a gentleman that was invited to the meeting and he is currently out of this homeless situation, but he was in it. So he could himself speak and share his experience. So he did, and that was very helpful for us. Um, and then the last thing was, what type of services do we need to bring locally so that folks are connected to housing services? County agencies that work directly with those needing the wraparounds for resources, uh, resources and services, I'm sorry, that was supposed to be services. Um, it would help to have all the right resources in one agency, a guideline out the recovery process for those who don't know where to start to help, to get help. I think that's a key thing. Um, like I was saying is, you know, once you unhouse somebody, but the thing is what's next? What do they need to do next to get that, you know, to get completely out of that situation? That's all we have for right now. Um, it was a really good session. I think we, we did, we did receive a lot of feedback from the community. We do have investment from the community. Um, we do want to find a solution. Um, it's not going to be uh one solution, it's all situations. Um, as I mentioned, um, one of the things is, is that we need to keep in mind that this is something new for us. Um, Genevieve, I don't know if she's on. Is she on? We did, I started to be on.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I don't know, Genevieve, if you want to share anything on how you, um, what you saw at the workshop?
Hi, yes, um, I would just like to share that uh I think this was the first for the coalition in terms of hosting a workshop with uh city members and city uh officials and just really kind of creating a plan that is uh locally built by the community. Something that I'd like to note was, uh, what was really impressive was how many folks actually from, from the encampments actually showed up to voice a little bit of what was important to them. That is I, I do have to say that that was a really um impressive turnout. And uh, there was really great feedback brought to the table and it really in line with what the Leave Me Home Plan right now is built on. So I just want to um, to give kudos to the City of Solidad Community Development Team. They did a really great job of pulling off uh this, uh, this community workshop.
Thank you, Genevieve. Okay, well, thank you so much, Tensia. Um, is Brian gonna say anything?
No, I, I, I'd like to thank Tensia, Community Economic Development, uh, Community Engagement and Recreation Police for all being there. That was a really good team effort. Uh, we, we did provide a recommendation in tonight's report and uh would like to uh have, have a discussion with the council if, if that recommendation seems something the council would like to support.
Can you provide input on your recommendations?
Yeah, so uh, our recommendation is to direct staff to participate in any multi-agency working group that is convened by the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers Monterey County, as called for in the adopted action plan for the Leaving Home Plan. Uh, furthermore, the council may wish to appoint a subcommittee to participate in those working groups as well.
Yeah, th- thank you for that. And I think I, um, Genevieve on this, I'm, I'm gonna defer to you a little bit because I know that there's different um, a sense of adoption that the council adopted the plan, the Leave Me Home Plan on October of twenty twenty-two. Um, there was some uh recommendations that were made through that as well. And I, I know the discussion with the council was, we want to come back and we want to look at, obviously, there is a five-year comprehensive plan that was adopted by the, the county and we adopted that as well. And one of the benefits of that was now that it gave us resources, it, the ability to be able to access resources when we didn't have that before. And now we're not starting from scratch. There's already a plan. Because there's already been a lot of work on um through the homeless coalition in regards to the homeless uh population and some of the needs already. So a lot of what we heard today is a lot of what has been documented already in terms of our homeless population throughout the Salinas Valley and the peninsula. So I think what the council had asked at that time was for us to come back and look at from that five-year plan, what was strategically, you know, that the Salt, City of Solidad wanted to adopt. And part of that was doing the workshop to be able to have that feedback and to be able to ensure that we not only um adopted what we thought was um reasonable, but what we were getting feedback in our community. So I thought that was a really great workshop. Thank you so much for putting that together. I'm really happy that our, our homeless population was there as well in the coordination with the homeless coalition. So I just want to say in terms of the, the Coalition of the Homeless Service Providers, I think I mentioned this last time. I'm appointed now as part of the leadership team. So I, I had there was one meeting that I attended, I'm at the tail end, Genevieve, right? Um, but I'll be now having more information and being part of those discussions and having the ability to also understand when resources are coming and how do, how do we as a city prepare ourselves depending on what the council says we want to move forward with the adoption of what portion of the strategic plan. Um, so that is one avenue, at least that I know now, the City of Solidad does have a seat at the table where we didn't have it before. Um, and there's obviously through the coalition, a lot of different, uh, there's a lot of different components to it. So uh, just to be clear, Je- um, Genevieve and um Brian in terms of other uh, other elements of where a subcommittee, I like the idea of a subcommittee, but where other the council can be or the, the team could be appointed to. So Genevieve, is there any of other opportunities of the coalition or other um committees that are meeting where our, our staff can be part of that and our, you know, different representatives from the council?
I'm so glad that you asked. Yeah, uh, so and also congratulations on uh becoming a, a part of the leadership council. I know that that was uh you were, um, you were sworn in on our last meeting, so we're very excited to have you. And that is, as you mentioned, an excellent step in the right direction and really being part of the uh discussions, understanding resources that are coming within the community. We actually had a discussion with uh your staff today about what kind of committees uh we have available through the leadership council. There is a uh committee called the Housing Pipeline Committee that uh is actually meeting next week. I've talked to, to the team uh locally about it uh to attend and the purpose of the meeting is to, you know, it really hones in a little bit on that strategy number two as to how do we increase um different housing solutions and uh, uh, that's where uh city counterparts. So uh, it's chaired by Anastasia Wyatt uh from the City of Pacific Grove, as well as Jane Barr uh from Eden Housing. It's um where city officials as well as housing developers come together to um, see what's coming down the pipeline, the housing pipeline. And then there um in terms of uh connections within the community, I've connected uh members of the team to the City of Salinas. Uh, just to understand a little bit of a, what does, what does providing services or uh coordinating homeless services uh and building a local system for homelessness look like within a city jurisdiction? So uh, I've connected members of the team to the City of Salinas in terms of some different uh exciting next steps uh beyond just committees and uh actually putting some action items into what, for the City of uh Solidad, uh, we're exploring and looking a little bit more into an opportunity from uh Cal- uh California ACH, which is uh the California Department of uh Interagency Council on Homelessness. And uh, that's where a lot of the funding opportunities that uh and local competition that we funnel through here at the coalition. Uh, one of the opportunities that's come up recently is the Encampment Resolution Fund. That's one that we're exploring a little bit to see if there's a opportunity to partner with the city, different city jurisdictions. So again, we're, it's very new, it's very fresh. We just started the conversation today, but we're exploring a little bit of those options.
Okay, thank you for that, Genevieve. So then we do have already, you've identified already some of those uh places to be able to.
Yes, we did have a meeting with her this morning. Um, we have a lot of questions as far as like as far as city staff, what is the next steps for us? Um, so we are going to be attending these meetings and we are connecting with, uh, we already connected with City of Sal- uh Salinas, I'm sorry. And um, we will be meeting with them also with the person over there. And I'm just sitting down and kind of going through what is already happening over there and what can we do here? And what can we implement? Uh, we will be bringing other departments. I know that we have a sign link on this, but it is it is going to encompass other departments. For example, police department, you know, that they do have direct contact with them. We wanted to also bring in community engagement. Um, if needed, I don't, I don't know, other departments, and we'll just have to. We wanted to also bring in community engagement, um, if needed. I know, I don't know other departments and we'll just have to see, um, what we're gonna do. But this is gonna be a collaborative effort. Um, and again, Genevieve, thank you for being ours, you know, our ears, our eyes and, you know, and our guide through this process. Um, again, this is something new, but, um, for me, living at firsthand, it is very difficult. You know, you don't know where to go, where to start. Um, you know, you find yourself being hopeless and I can only imagine that person that is being homeless, what they're feeling. So if they're feeling hopeless and I'm feeling helpless and I can't help them, I don't know where to go. So I, you know, I can at least apply that experience in this work that I'm doing now. And, um, to me, it, it just, it just makes, you know, resonates and it, you know, it's, it's really close to home to me. And, um, but I think that as the, as a city, this is a great step, especially for South County. And what we heard, one thing that we heard in the workshops was that we don't have anything. I know King City is working on that right now. And they're, uh, through Home Key, they are converting a hotel into a shelter out there. So they're already work, starting the work, but that's in King City. So you're talking about Salinas and then King City. And we're smack in the middle. So getting that, uh, you know, those resources available to, we may not have a lot of people that are living in this situation right now. But, you know, tomorrow it could be another family, you know, and I've seen it firsthand and people have come into the gay with center and seeking assistance. I have a family who was living in our apartment lot. So, you know, it's, it's situations like that, that, you know, one day we may have seven, one day we may have twelve. So I think we are moving, you know, with Brian and I meeting with Genevieve, it's, it's gonna help, um, go into that next step. So we've started, but we just wanted to give you an update and, um, and create a point from there.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Tensia, for that. And thank you for, um, just, you know, um, taking the lead on this as part of community um, economic development. Um, and thank you for all that. I know for us, I mean, I participated in the point and, point in time count as a council member back in twenty sixteen, you know, or twenty twenty, I think, when they did it the first time. So I was able to see, like many of our residents don't know, because it's out in the river and that's where we have most of it. But when I did the point in time count, I realized that there was people at CVS. There was people where we didn't have the development up in Orchard. There was people in trailers and people in cars there. So um, we don't see it, but, but it does happen in our community. And I think King City is a little bit further because they're part of the coalition already for several years now. And they've been able to look at what they needed, uh, especially because they're in the same situation as we are in the river bed. There's a lot. And from the first time that I went to the river bed in twenty twenty to now, I mean, it's, 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 we have more, right? And as you said, it's gonna increase. So I think, you know, there's a lot, uh, to digest. So thank you for that. Um, I, I think coming back to be able to look at the council, like what is a strategic plan from that five-year plan? What are the things that we can do given what we do have? The funding is gonna come obviously at a later time and we're gonna look for those opportunities. But what is it based on the work, based on the communications? Based on the plan, what is it that we can start off with? And I like the concept of establishing a solid at homeless committee and looking at how, who do, who do we bring in as partners? So there's really a comprehensive committee to be able to look at what is needed, what, what do we start off with? What is the, you know, current need? And then what, how do we build with that? And so I know Genevieve with her staff, her team has a lot of experience and the coalition has been doing this for years. So helping us to be able to formulate and put together that committee to be able to start having those conversations. And then a recommendation to the council, where do we go from there? So council, I'll open it up for, uh, comments and questions and then I'll take it out to the public. So I don't forget. Uh, so council member, um, Cabrera?
Are you gonna start with us and another public?
Um, we can start, you guys want me to go out to the public? So let me go out to the public and then we'll come back. And so, uh, uh, to the public, then anyone that's joining us here, if there's any comments, uh, in regards to this item.
Good evening, council. Once again, um, I was very fortunate to be part of that, um, town hall. And I learned a lot too. And, um, I just wanted to read off by saying, you know, how we treat our most vulnerable um, says a lot about our community and our leaders of the city. And, um, that resources without access is not support. And access without support is not opportunity. So wherever direction we, from what I got, you know, my understanding it from after listening to the different, um, tables and dialogues, um, I think, you know, that um, whatever, because this is a monster of a task to take on. But I'm glad that we have, you know, we're taking the steps necessary to move forward. But wherever direction we go, I would like to see mental health to be in the forefront. Um, especially like in stuff like police calls, um, as much as possible, as long as it's not endangering our social workers. But I would like to see that, you know, um, being implemented. And, you know, and it's just, you know, some of these stuff that, you know, that we judge that, you know, it's like, well, they have all these resources, why don't they access them? Um, and I learned, you know, I learned a lot. I learned a lot, like, for example, you know, some of the reasons why they keep their pets with them, it's their emotional supports for them. You know, we, we heard from Jennifer, you know, how important these, um, animals are to us every and, every day of our lives. And it's not only for them, it's not only in emotional support, but also safety for their own protection, especially for the women out there. Um, and the longer we take on this, you know, it's cold out there right now. And five minutes in the rain, it's five minutes in the rain. And these, our, our people are having to be out there day and night without having to know where, you know, the police are gonna come and move them out of the way of where they're at right now and not having that uncertainty. Uncertainty, you know, where, where they're gonna spend the night during these forms. It's just added pressure to them. So I'm glad that we're moving forward and I hope that we can make progress on this issue because it can't come soon enough to these, to our, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone that is joining us, um, via Zoom, would like to make a comment? Okay. Oh, we do? Okay, Sally Sue? Oh, Sally, Sally. Hi, Sally. Do you wanna unmute yourself? Sally, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is new to me.
It's okay. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you for, um, hearing me out. Yeah, um, it's like really cold these days and, you know, with the water rising and it's just like, we had discussed, um, last time about a designated spot for us. You know, um, for us, because I think that's like really not safe right here where we're at right now on top, you know, on the edge of the cliff. So I was wondering, is there any, I mean, any possible way to find like a designated spot for us all to go where it'd be safer for us right now?
Yeah, Sally, thank you for your comment. Um, so I, so, so let me just, we're, we're gonna take the comments and then we'll, I'll come back if there's another comments, because I know that we do have locations, especially um, the, uh, Coalition of Homeless Service Providers. I've been part of those communications that have been taking place daily with Genevieve. And so they do have emergency weather coordination meetings that they're having daily. So, um, we have, there is a, the facility in, um, Greenfield. And I know that, you know, people have requested facilities here. Unfortunately, we don't have them. But for everyone that's there, the facility in Greenfield at Catholic.
Holy Trinity Church.
Holy Trinity Church. Thank you. Holy Trinity Church is there and is available. So that could be, that, that's currently used for anyone that's needed, um, i- 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 and are in sheltered. So you guys do have a location to be able to go to.
Oh, and they allow pets?
You know, I don't know. I have to defer to Jesse. Yes, okay. Yes, they do. Thank you. Yes, they.
And they, and I can also add to that there is gonna be some outreach teams that are, so Access Support Network and the CH outreach team will be coming down there, uh, Sally, tomorrow. So, uh, you'll, there are, there's gonna be some folks that are gonna be down there if folks need, uh, public transportation. I know that MST is also providing for transportation as well. So just, um, extra information for you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you for that, Genevieve. Thank, thank you, Sally. Thank you for coming to the council meeting. Okay, um, anybody else? Okay, I don't see. Oh, yeah, okay, uh, Mr. Corolejo?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm, I would like to see something get done like pretty quick. We've been dealing with this, well, with our business. We've been dealing with this for like six or seven years already, since we've been open. And I really feel, you know, for the homeless that they, they got it hard. We, me and my wife, we go out there on, check on them at least two or three times a week. We take them food, but it's hard, you know, and I, I would just like to see something done quick. I don't want to wait another five years. I mean, five years is a long time to adopt another program, you know, that is gonna come and hopefully they can help. But I would just like to see something done as quick as possible because it does get cold out there. And, you know, and, and it, it's also with the crime also too. I mean, uh, I've probably, I think I probably spent about at least close to four thousand dollars just in, you know, recovering stuff for customers in the past that have had windows broken and our bathrooms being a mess made of and stuff like that. So I would just, I would just hope that something comes quick because, you know, it is, it, it can, it can bear on a business and, you know, and it also bears on them too. It's really hard for them and you know, I mean, we can only do so much as like when we go and help them and stuff, but, you know, we've put people in rooms before and stuff and, and I just, I, I would just like to see something a lot quicker than five years because, you know, it is, it is cold out there and, you know, there are more coming and, you know, we don't want them to feel like they have nowhere to go. And, you know, I just, I just wanted to, to speed along more faster is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments? Okay, see none, council. Then I'll bring it back, um, for council comments. And so I'll start with council member Cabrera.
Yes, I wanna, I wanna, um, be back a little bit on, um, uh, Mr. Corolejo. It is important that we, uh, put a little bit more effort into it. And, uh, uh, I hear you, uh, whenever you see this for the first time is, is the question is, what do I do? Uh, we helped a family a long time ago. I was, uh, in my first year in San Jose State, they lived in the corner in their, um, in their van was, uh, the, the father, the mother and three children. And they lived there because two blocks away from that corner was the, the school. So it was really very convenient for them. Uh, so the first, the first question that I, that, that, that we ask is, well, how do you find, um, resources? And it starts with food. What do I get for? What do I get? Medical services? What do I get? And studying those questions, you will develop a, a list of, um, uh, places where they can get help. But the important thing that I, that I realized throughout the years is that it's not just, sometimes you don't even know that that person that you're, that is next to you is a homeless. I, I, I had a friend that I known back then for almost a, a year. And I didn't know that he was living in that, next to that area of roads. So he was living in that and he was homeless. And I didn't know. He was, he was holding a job. He had a, um, he was homeless and, and, uh, we never had, I never really got the opportunity to ask him where he lived. But he was homeless. So I, I've been, um, around homeless for a long time. And I know that, uh, the faster that we act, the better that we, that, that we have it for them. And I, I think that we should, um, that we should form that committee so that we can take, um, medicine quickly. So, yeah, that's, that's my comment.
Okay, tha- thank you, uh, Councilmember Chavez.
Um, you know, for me, I think that, um, you know, looking at an MOU with the county would be something we'd like to do. So I don't know if the committee would be the one that would start that process. But there is a lot of resources that comes from the county that have a lot of resources. When we talk about mental health, when you talk about contracts that they have with mental health, uh, providers, uh, as well as the social service, uh, pieces that they, uh, incorporate. So um, I think that that is key. And so if this committee, um, is, is gonna be put together, then I think that that's the key to trying to at least deal with part of the, of the issue. Um, as far as um, the other piece, I think that we have, uh, the mayor who was already part of, uh, the leadership team of the, uh, homeless coalition. So I think we've got those two pieces. And I think if we move in that direction, I think that, um, you know, we can start there and see where, where this leads.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Chavez. Councilwoman Corolejo?
Um, yes, I could say a lot of different, uh, you know, stories about, um, being housed, but I'm gonna try to uh, focus, I guess, on, on what I think we could do that, that could help them, I think. I have pretty much three, three different things laying down. One is, um, uh, cleaning and sanitation. I think it's important to first have, uh, help. And then it includes having healthy, uh, and clean and sanitary decluttered. Um, I guess housing, a housing environment. And I know that the, unsheltered have been asking for that as well. So to me, that's the first thing. Uh, the second thing I think wraparound services, we need to make sure that they're healthy. That includes, uh, physical, um, mental. Uh, and another thing that I saw, um, on the report that we received that I really liked was it touched on, uh, those that have had issues with the criminal justice system. I'm all for giving people second chances. I think, you know, a lot of us have made mistakes, you know, when we were younger, we matured. I've never had, you know, those issues on the, on a personal note that, you know, I have made mistakes. Like, we all have as, uh, you know, as, as young people and, you know, I, I think they deserve a chance. And that was brought up. How that was one of the issues that was holding a lot of them from being able to obtain jobs or obtain even housing, uh, which is really a basic need. So I think we could bring wraparound services to help, to help with those issues, the, the health, the physical health, mental health, um, help them all within the, uh, you know, criminal justice system issues that they might have. And I think also a big, um, part is, uh, bringing in organizations and advocacy, uh, which I think was talked about a little bit, uh, before. And I know I've worked with the Housing Advocacy Council and they're, and an awesome organization. They help people not just that are homeless, but even, you know, they help them out so that they don't get to that point. So they'll help with, uh, with rent, with security deposit. They even help some with, uh, with their cars, to help some homeless people to get their cars, uh, going. They bought tires for them. So I think it's important to start making those connections with different organizations. Um, trying to think what else I have. I think, I think that's probably it for now. And I think once we get healthy, healthy people emotionally, mentally and in every way possible, then hopefully something changes to where they're ready to get help. Because I think unfortunately, some of them are, of our unsheltered are there right now by choice. And, and they don't, you know, want to be in a, in a home right now. But I really hope that something changes and that hopefully we're able to contribute to that so that they can be, uh, sheltered again.
Thank you. Mayor, for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, first and foremost, um, in my past, my past, uh, work experience, I worked with the homeless and, and I had the clientele that also had the mental health issues as well. And, and one of the ones that we utilized was the county. County had, uh, various, uh, facilities available to address some of these issues that were in, in some instances, uh, exasperated by, uh, drug addiction and those type of things. And they ended up in the streets. And oftentimes, first and foremost, the homeless have to want the help. And, um, Sally, if you're still listening out there, I want to thank you for calling in. Uh, and, uh, that shows that, uh, at least you're willing to listen and, and reach out for some help. And, uh, there are programs out there. And if we work as, uh, councilmember Chavez has said, with the county, utilizing the influence that the mayor has with the coalition and bringing together, I think, uh, more importantly, a South County approach to this. So we can address those issues. I know for myself, having the South County individuals that were homeless and needed services or mental health services, generally we would, uh, move them towards Salinas and get them and provide them with those services and trying to transition them out. So, uh, the wraparound services and most type of things are not cheap. And so we want to utilize our county and our resources that we have available to us. Um, so that's an, an important component too. So, and, you know, uh, it's kind of like misleading because I know I looked at the, uh, the homeless, uh, last, uh, homeless population census, the last one goes out and they identified only twelve in Salida. But we all know there's more than twelve, right? Uh, and we also know in the school has their homeless, uh, um, statistics as well and which is probably larger than that. So w- we want to ensure that, that, that we utilize the sources that are, uh, the resources that are presently in place and they're thereby. And they're thereby and getting those individuals to those. One of the things I'm not really in favor of is creating. Taking, you know, portable toilets, those kinds of things out there because we need to get them out of there. We need to get them where it's warm. Where they get some food, they're able to get some services, whether it's mental health, whether it's health issues. That dealing with whether Dennis or or some type of infection or something. Now I have. Getting them out of there because that is not a place for anyone to live. And again, we're getting back to the point where they have to want that. Oftentimes, you'll you'll go to them and I I had my guys come to the same thing or ladies. And tell me, I don't want to live in the home. But I want you to get in there. They have food that. I want that. I just want to be able to take a shower in the morning and and have some food and then go on. So therefore, I I think it's really important that that those that want it, we work with within the organizations that are available to us. And then those that don't, unfortunately, we need to ensure that or. Hopefully strongly encourage them not to reside along the river in those areas. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Potem for that. So my comments to just. I want first of all, say thank you to Genevieve because I just want to make it clear to our community. The plan that we adopted is a fire plan. It doesn't mean that it's gonna take us five years to get there. It means it means that we adopted the plan. For the purpose of making sure that we also had access and joined the county for. Access to resources to start doing some support because the city, we don't have any budget for the homeless population. And so as a mayor pro tem said, the way the services and the funding comes, it doesn't come to the cities. We don't get any homeless money. That comes through the county. Because the county provides the social services. I know obviously cities have been changing because of the need that we've seen in mental health and other areas. But that's traditionally city, just so the public understands, the city doesn't get funding for these kind of services. It comes to the county. And this is why it was important to be able to adopt that plan, to be able to have access. And now being able to be part of the leadership coalition. So we can start looking at what's coming available as Genevieve said, right? They're working on different. Monies, different funding opportunities. So how do we now, we're part of that. Having those conversations, but I agree that for us, it's looking at a South County strategic plan, right, that we could be able to look at. Short term and long term because although we say we want it to happen now, it's not gonna happen now. There's some things that are that we can address now. And there's some things that are short term and long term. The clean, the cleaning and sanitation, that's gonna happen and we saw, obviously. We've been working with the county, we've been working with Genevieve, we have to be working with all of our, and it's been doing a good job of. Working with all of the property owners that own part of that river and we need to be able to get clearances to go in there. To do the cleaning. So just, you know, sometimes it seems easy. Why don't we just go and clean that up and take it out there? And obviously, lo and behold, we find out there's a lot of these processes that need to happen, right? So. Just in terms of the the cleaning that is gonna happen. I know that they're finalizing the agreements with the property owners to make sure that the city and the county. Are able to go in there and then they're gonna have a special set of volunteers because of some of the. Health hazardous kind of situations there to be able to do that. So that was another component to that. So just wanted to make sure that that we were clear on that. And I think the other component, as we're looking at formulation of. Homeless committee is that there's two different things that we're looking at unsheltered, which is what we see out in the river. But then we have our sheltered population, right, that's living in cars, that's living, you know, in in homes and overcrowded situations, but it's not their own home. So. It's looking at both of those items is the sheltered and unsheltered populations. And I just want to say, resources are coming. And so I want to make sure our community understands that it's not like, you know, our population, homeless population hasn't had any services. Through the chess services or wraparound services are coming. I I went out there several times with them to go and. You know, walk around and they have services, they've given hotel vouchers, they brought food, they brought different toiletries as well as. You know, other communities, the Catholic Church has been involved with the last several years of going out there, providing food and making sure that they had. Toiletries, making sure that they had, you know, what they needed. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that we, this is something that was coming to us now. Because the city now has an opportunity to look at a strategic way to deal with this. But there has been a lot of, there's been a lot of services and it's been a lot of support from other parts of our community. That has that have been there trying to provide what what they feel is needed for our population. So just want to make that clear. So we're in the. We know that that's been happening, but. Again, it's, you know, I'm glad that we're at this point now because we weren't here before and I'm glad that October, the council made a decision to adopt that plan. So now. We can move forward with that.
If I may, Mary. Jeremy, when is the next working group? That would include Monterey County, San Diego County, city jurisdictions and. People that have experienced the being unhoused. Is that, is there anything in the near future?
Are you talking about something similar to what we did with the city of Solidad?
Yeah, more of a grander scale.
No, no, no. Just talk about the specific strategy.
Area three. After two. So one of the strategies in the in the plan is to convene. A working group, which would include Monterey County, San Diego County and then city jurisdictions. And that may be a good place to start to really, yeah.
So there's a, there's the housing pipeline committee. That's a little bit different. We have a couple of different working committees. But it's not specifically with, you know, the counties and the city jurisdictions. Right now with our COC, we're actually relooking at our governance structure to look at for committees. So there is a possibility for us to to convene that soon. Yes, yes, Brian.
And just an idea, that might be a really good place to start when we, because it's really about resources in. Monterey County needs to be at the table to to figure out South County and Solidad. Just a, just a thought that we, that should take place for us to.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good place to start. But also, guys, just to remind you guys, the Leadership Council, it has been working on this. King City has been at the table for far longer than we have and King City does have the resources. I mean, they they've been able to access funding through. The COC. So now that we're here, it's an opportunity for us to be able to look at that because the county and all the other entities in San Benito, everybody's there. So. There is resources. Now it's looking at what do we need? How do we formulate our plan, start our committee? And then we can start looking at what are the needs specifically, short term and long term for us in the city of Solidad. And South County. So I I want to, we have more items on the agenda, council. So I know we said we're gonna have a hard stop at ten thirty. So if there's no other, just, I I think you have. It was a ten? No, I thought it was ten forty. Yeah, so, but we can, let's look at the agenda, what's left, council, because I think we want to make sure that we we. Get out here on time. So, okay, Brian, I think you guys have enough information from us and discussion and next steps. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for staff.
Yeah, thank you for all the work, Nancy. Thank you so much for putting that together. Thank you, Brian, and you as well. So, council, I think that's, because it was just to receive the staff report, community input session, and we don't have action items.
So the only, the only thing was just that you would be continue on in your capacity in the the leadership capacity and they're gonna wait for that. Monterey convening meeting that happens and then we'll start there.
They'll start, yeah, and putting together like.
Okay, more with Genevieve on when that may be and we can keep the council prior.
Thank you.
And then council will get updates from Ed if you can let us know in terms of the county and the cleanup. So that way the council isn't updated on that as well. Okay, so council, thank you so much. We'll go on to our next item on our report. Which is B dash four, set a date for the Joint City Council and Planning Commission workshops to review and discuss the housing element process with Placeworks. And so since you're standing, the Ryan, I think this is yours.
Yeah, I, we're. Tag teaming this in the general plan, Ariana and I. So I don't know if Ariana wanted to do this or do you want me to just.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, hi, Ariana, I'm an assistant planner with the city of Solidad. My apologies for not joining in person tonight. I would like to present item before here. Staff is working, as you may know, on the housing elements that is due. At the end of twenty twenty-three, December twenty twenty-three. The last housing element was adopted in twenty twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. We have been working with Placeworks to conduct an in-person and virtual introductory meeting, brief presentation, a brief discussion. And ultimately, public engagement and get the community to know what the housing element is and how important it is for the city of Solidad. For the development of future housing needs and also for grant funding opportunities for for any city projects. This time, staff would like to recommend a date. For a joint city council and planning commission meeting on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. If three out of the five council members are available. In case that is not an option for council, we did provide some dates on the staff report. For you to choose and determine whether or not you're able to participate in individual meetings in case. In the case that council chooses an alternate date from April thirteenth, it'd be a most likely an in. In individual meeting with council and a different meeting will be hosted by planning commission. With the same content and same goals as as well. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Ariana, for that. So I know the April thirteenth, just right off the bat, I'm not gonna be here because that's the league. In Sacramento, and I don't know if any other council members are going to the Cal Cities. League. That's the. We talked about it last time.
Leadership.
The Leadership Summit. Yeah, so I won't be here, but I just, the other alternative date for me was April eighteenth. I don't know if the council. Is available and that would be, that wouldn't be a joint session though. I think that would be the individual.
Yeah, we just thought to have both of them to get, have the presentation done once, but if the 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 dates don't work, then we'd have to do two separate weeks.
But does it work for the rest of the council, April thirteenth?
Mine does. Right now, that's clear.
So you're going to the Leadership Summit.
Yeah, so he's going to.
Two members of the council.
Yeah, and Councilman Coralejo is not available on the thirteenth either. So can we do April eighteenth? That was another alternative that was provided to us. Does that work? Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So I think that works. So we got April eighteenth. Then if we can just send us, if you can send us just a calendar invite, so everybody puts it on the calendar.
Texting, definitely.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good.
Well, technically not.
No, they were extended. Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you, council. Any questions on this item? Okay, so April thirteenth, I'll take it out to the public. Any members of our public have any comments on item B dash four? Okay, I see now. Well, thank you so much, Ariana. Thank you for staying up so this evening with us instead of an afternoon. Thank you. Okay, council, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. We already did B dash five, B dash six. So our final item is B dash seven. Oh, we still have eight and nine, eight and nine. Yeah. So can we go ahead and do B eight and nine, get those out of the way and then come back to. Okay, so council, can I get a motion, questions on B dash eight, authorizing, this is the authorization. To we, to have the city of Solidad support to to our with their wastewater treatment.
Yes.
Can I get an emotion? Okay, I.
Is there any questions?
So do we have any questions? I know that we did this six months ago when because of their impacts, because of their storms. So they continue to have impact. So this is a reason why we're it's coming back to us. So, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, we have a second by councilmember Chavez. All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you.
So that that, just for clarification, that's an extension of the original sixty day authorization to.
And it's how many days?
We didn't specify a date. I mean, the last time we specified sixty days, we said we'd bring it back to you. We're continuing to treat and here we are with another.
So, yeah, okay, sounds good. No, that's a good. Okay, and then the other item is B nine, B dash nine, ratification of the emergency declaration due to the current. A storm, atmospheric storm events that we are having and some of the impacts and that we can be able to. Ensure that we get FEMA reimbursement at seventy-five percent of the cost, whatever costs are projected. So council, can I entertain a motion unless you have any questions on that specific item?
No questions.
So I just, the resolution before you is to basically ratify the the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency that your interim city manager executed. I think on Friday, yeah, March ninth. So in doing so, then we will. Continue with the the. Understanding of the status of the emergency situation in the city and as you've indicated, be able to apply for reimbursement for our abatement and mitigation.
Go ahead and make the motion to adopt resolution number fifty-nine twenty-seven.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. So now we will now go back to item B dash seven and.
Ariana, are you still on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening. Again, I am an assistant planner with the city of Solidad. As it's been brought up to council and the community, staff is working on the Solidad general plan. With the Horizon Year twenty forty-five, I know in previous, maybe the staff report, it's mentioned twenty twenty-five. But publicly, we should reference it as this twenty forty-five general plan. On February fifteenth, the regular council meeting, staff presented a method to recruit. GPAC members, General Advisory Committee members. Council approved staff recommendation where each council member was to appoint one member for this GPAC committee. And allow for six more applications through an open recruitment process. We updated the staff, updated the the application for this general plan. Went ahead and did it on an online format and it also paper copies upon request. And made it more accessible with more questions as provided in the attachments throughout. At this time, council can announce their appointments through this GPAC committee. And I'm more than happy to announce unless, mayor, you'd like to announce the the other applications that were recommended. I'm not sure how the process can work through there. As mentioned, Community and Economic Development Director. Recommended six additional applications to those than the council appointments. And we are bringing this forward to be approved unless council would like to modify those recommendations or provide further. Input on on this selection process.
Yeah, thank you, Ariana, for that. I don't, yeah, I think we have, I mean, every council made their recommendation and that's part of the staff report. As well as the other recommendations were that were made. So at this time, I'll open it up to members of the public, for semi-blocks, members of the public to see if they have any. Comments or questions on that. I think the information was pretty clear in terms of the recommendations being made. Do we have any members of the public that want to make any comments on item? B dash seven? No? Okay, so we'll bring it back to council then. If there's any questions or comments on item B dash seven.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, I first of all, was glad to see so many people that that applied. The general, okay, I was going to say I did. Have a little bit of a concern because there's certain, I believe there was like eleven different people that are. People that we that were trying to target. And I know seniors was one of them. We had, I think it was landowners and. Like ag ranchers, you, I'm trying to remember all the ones we had, but I didn't see anybody from. like ag ranchers, youth, I'm trying to remember all the ones we had, but I didn't see anybody from from the ag industry, and that's a big concern to me because that is a huge, you know, industry there that is not being represented, and that all trickles down from the growers all the way down to our, you know, to our field workers that go out there and work, so that was a concern to me. Also, I didn't, I don't think I saw anybody from the school representing, like an administrator, a school board member, you know, so. Yeah, so I think that, that's all the thoughts I had on that, but I just really feel that land ownership and ag and school representation is important, especially as for cities growing, and I'm not sure if we had a senior either, I can't remember off the top of my head.
We have.
Yeah, there was a couple of, and there was a part of ours, I was happy to see our Spanish speakers in there as well, and their, their senior population as well. Thank you for those comments, any other comments, council?
I have one, and just for information, because I see one person had only, had only been living in Salida six months. Is that, was that something, did we have any number of years that we'll have to, no?
Yeah, but is that, are they part of the six, the other six? Because I, I know they weren't, they weren't recommended, only the ones that were highlighted in yellow.
Oh, okay, I see, I see, I see.
Yeah, there was two that weren't recommended. Okay, council, any? Yeah, so it was just the highlighted ones that you have in yellow? Uh huh, yeah, so I was happy to see that we did have some older, and that we did have our different demographics and population, although we didn't have everybody, but I was happy to see that eight people did apply, so that's, that's good. Okay, council, any questions or comments?
The only comment I have through the chair is similar to what occurred with the S and Y committees, is that we get feedback right away if our point teams or individuals are not attending, so therefore we can replace them and continue the process.
Yeah.
And this is, we'll have a hybrid form, so people should be able to join, you know, if they can't be here a person, they can join.
Okay, council, if there's no other questions or comments?
I don't, I don't have a problem with the group, I think that, I would have wished we would have had a couple of folks from, you know, some of those areas. I think that it would be great to have somebody who's an ag to be here, but, you know, we can give it a try and see what it looks like, and if any of those folks don't show up, then maybe we can find somebody.
And this is, these are public meetings, and so.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and this is gonna be an important process, so I think every member of our community, I know we had certain demographics, but this is a general plan, and everybody's voice is really important as part of this process. So I'm hoping that with the selection that we have, they'll be able to encourage others to also come and be part of those meetings.
And that will be also part of our responsibility, so we can encourage our nominees or other people to participate actively, not just in this committee, but in every committee that we, that we have the opportunity to appoint, we should be contacting them to make sure that they're participating, and if not, then we can find somebody else to replace them.
Yeah.
I would like to also mention, I'm not sure if council's supposed to announce their appointments to the GPAC committee.
It's in the staff report, but yeah, we can, we can announce them, so we can go. So council member.
Yes, I appointed Fernando and.
Okay, councilman Coralejo?
Claudio Diaz Torres.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Marcelino Valuno.
And council member Chavez?
Laura Rivera.
Okay, and my opponent was Monica Andrade. Okay, and then do we wanna, the other ones are listed there, so let me just make sure. For the, just for our community, we do have Alma Fausto Bandez, Anthony Baca, Yisena Martinez, Evarista Banuelos, Marilla, Maria Pareda, Pareda, and Enaida Flores. And those were the six, yeah.
And the meetings will be by.
Okay, good, well, thank you so much for doing that, and thank you for the outreach for that. I'm excited to see that there was a little bit of a list of the different demographics, of representatives, yeah, different mix, so thank you.
Do we need a motion for the, for the, for the other six, or just?
Well, did you, I thought that you did it by.
Was to finalize appointment process, it's not.
Did we have, did you have the agendas as a minute motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, so we don't need. So can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the recommended individuals for the general.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, council, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so great, the motion carries, thank you.
Ariana, she's engaging and really getting this out in brighter time, yeah, so, did a great job.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you. Council, so we're almost on, that's a hard stop. We're just gonna go really quick. I was gonna, I'm gonna be there. I just want to say, I had an AMBAG meeting on March eighth, and there was a couple of comments, just, and I wanted just to make sure that I share this with you guys. So there, the discussion was in regards to the twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan, that's the Sustainable Community Strategy. It's a draft work program, there is going to be some more information coming, there's gonna be public engagement, they're gonna release a draft plan in late twenty twenty-five, and in June twenty twenty-six, it's gonna be for review and approval by the board. So that was one of the highlight items that I wanted to share with you. And also the REIT funding, which is REIT two point oh, which is what the city gets. There are six hundred million from the state's general fund, and AMBAG's share of that six million is ten million, ten point one million. They're in the process of drafting some guidelines for the regional competitive program, which is six million, and then the draft guidelines for the local sub-allocation grant program, which is two point six million. And this is a set aside, one hundred and twenty-five thousand per jurisdiction. So this is for our population, for we, the city, each city and county in AMBAG region is eligible for up to the one hundred and twenty-five thousand for eligible projects that can be processed, and I know our economic development has been working on some of these. So the application timeline is, they're gonna release it summer, early fall of twenty twenty-three, with the applications due AMBAG regional competitive, the applications are for the, the applications are gonna be for the AMBAG's regional competitive and local sub-allocation grant program, because the other ones will come directly to the city. And then MST, just a highlight, the board approved the Busway and Bus Rapid Transit Project, the Environmental Quality Act, and the exemption that it had under Senate Bill nine twenty-two. And then for me, on March seventh and eighth, on March ninth, I attended, I was invited to go to the seventh and eighth grade middle school to talk about gun violence prevention. So it was really amazing to hear a lot of the comments that came back from the students in regards to gun violence and prevention, and they did send me, they did provide counsel, and I want to make sure I give it to you guys as well. I have tons of these letters that the students sent to us. So what I think I'm gonna do, give them to Ed, and then if we can have, I don't know how many copies we can make. So everybody got these, great, so anyways, I know there's a lot of, there was a lot of feedback from them, and one of the things that we had talked about was a gun, a gun buyback program, and they're really interested in doing more education in terms of gun violence. So that was, for me at least, that's it, I think those were the most press, highlight ones, and pressing that I wanted to communicate to the council. Council member Tabera?
Just, I, I wanted to mention the class as well, all the names, but I think I'm a week. There's plenty of them, there's Raul de Jesus, Karina Martinez, Pedro Guzman, Aquilina Garcia, Kiel Zamora, Michelle Avundes Valdez, Jose Lopez, Laura Maglin, Jimena Jimenez, and all of them are from the class of Mr. Wassler?
Mr. Ty Wassler.
Ty Wassler, seven eighth, and I've been really, really busy this week, so I'm planning to visit the, the class, and thank for the letters. He was, for me, was really moving because I've lost several family members for gun violence, and just the thought that a kid can talk about how scary it feels, I, I think that we should do something about it. I also went to the Social Solidar Historical Society for my first meeting. It was excellent, very educational, they went mostly over the financials and everything, but they're working in a, in a putting out together the, the, the exhibition for this spring. They have, I went into their website and became a member. I still have to go and pay my dues, but I will do so as soon as I can, and I will encourage everybody to look into that and become a member, because we have to promote this, this. They have a lot of information, a lot of history, and I've been living in this town for over thirty-seven years, and I would like to see, I would like to see my children to know more about the origins of the city and everything that has been going on in this town for over a century. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Chavez?
Not a whole lot to report on, the South Salinas Valley Broadband Authority meeting had a meeting, and basically, the only real topic that was discussed had to do with the website that went live, and it's still being updated, there's, the process that's also going through is getting the council, so the attorney that will be representing. So they're in that, negotiations in that part, and so I'll announce as soon as we have anything to announce. And then, that's about it, the, as far as Tammy's concerned, it'll be next week.
Perfect, thank you, councilman Coralejo?
I just wanted to thank again the children who sent the cards, and just wanted to say thank you for reaching out, and, you know, just for them to know that, that we do care, we do have laws in place, and just thank you again for reaching out.
Thank you, and then councilman, Mayor Protem?
No, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have, council, I want to make sure we stay, it's already three minutes, so can we, are we good to bypass? Unless anybody has any announcements or reports, we did that already. Praises? No, just NJROTC, I know they're going to competition, and they are gonna go, I think, by the end, at the end of the month, so just want to wish them luck, they're always amazing, representing Salida, and so just good luck with that.
Just real quick praise, if that's okay. I just wanted to praise Zeke and Crystal Reyes for their anniversary outlet grand opening. I think most of us were all there, I think all, yeah, all of us were definitely there, and so just praise them. But also, I wanted to praise Sebastian Guillen and council member Ben Jimenez for being nominated to be inducted into the Gonzalez High School Athletic Hall of Fame.
Congratulations!
I thought people weren't gonna know.
Awesome.
You played football with no mask, with a little helmet.
Thank you, council, okay, any future agenda items, so we can finish, future agenda items? None? Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
I just have two, I'll say it quickly, the first one is I wanted to see if it was possible to put on the agenda to invite the Historical Society to come and do a report on the farmers' market, their venture criteria, their outreach and their selection process. And then the second one, and I think this might already be on there for the next one, just the social media community post guidelines, just kind of to review on, maybe give us an opportunity to make changes if we want to. We definitely want to support nonprofits or any organization or group that is advocating for the betterment of our city.
Okay, so you have two things, social media, and then the other one was?
Farmers' market ventures criteria?
Might want to add one?
Yeah.
Real quick, I would like to see if staff could do a little bit of research to see if we can modify or somehow bring to place that, what we're doing right now, they came out with good ideas and put in, having us appoint one person to the committee and maybe reviewing, I know a lot of people like the Salinas, the city council and the, and the mayor, appoint one person for every committee, and I would like to see that in, happening in our, in our city if it's possible. Maybe review the selection process and, and the appointment, and I know that might come out in, in the general plan. If it, if it does, it will be something perfected in the general plan, but if not, maybe we can do it, start working on that one.
Okay, so appointment of committees, like a different policies?
Yes. Yes, but especially with that, I hear always people saying that people are not attending to the committees, and what I see is that if we appoint somebody to the committees, we have already five different, different people. If that person is not attending, like in some cases, then, then us will be, we will be responsible to find somebody else and to appoint a different person, or encourage that person to attend to them.
So that's coming back, that's part of the attendance policy?
So we include that as part of it, yes.
Okay, so that's coming back.
For clarity purposes, sorry, through the, through the chair, so are we, because most of the appointments are done through the mayor, you're saying that we change that process?
I'm saying for that, not for us in the committees, but for the people like in, in the planning commission. We had, in the planning commission, we had somebody, the mayor appointed somebody, and then went to the process. But if we have in a process in place in which instead of one person appointing, all of us can appoint somebody, and that way, the people, as, as the, as the city council members change, then the person will be also changing.
So we'll bring back, we'll report on the absences issue. We'll also identify all the committees for which there is an ordinance or a reservation or council policy on how the appointments are made.
How payments are made in some, yeah, so we'll look at some that are, yeah. Okay, council, so we got, so before we adjourn, just our thoughts and prayers are with the community of Baharo San Argo and all of those individuals in our community that have been affected by the floods, so you're in our thoughts and our prayers. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at.